Alrighty, welcome everyone. Uh, this is the September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three. Meeting, a regular meeting of the New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a not a stacked agenda tonight, but now I'm quite a bit of items to go over. One thing that I didn't notice, do we have on the agenda, the revision to the start times for the meetings?
Yep, that's at the end. Under administrated.
Yeah, I'm looking. Calendar, okay, got it. Let me take our roll call, Dan Radman here, Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Dick Ward is not here, Kent Turner.
Here.
John Cris.
Here.
And I, there's someone on Webex. Uh, Art Casavant, are you on Webex? No. Chris Herring is not here yet, John Engel is not, Paul Knag here. Tom Benton won't be here, and then Alan Squaredlow is hopefully pending and.
He's not on right now, though.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a quorum, we have five members. Uh, we can start the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, so Commissioner Knag will be seated.
Commissioner Knag will, well, um.
Brunch of eggnog.
Huh?
Knag.
Knag.
Apology, sir.
Knag.
Um, to meet you with my name, even though it's spelled phonetically, so.
Um, he can be seated, but um, on the first item that we've got on the agenda here, this has to do with the Marquitos versus zoning board of appeals on Grace Farms. And Mr. Knog does not really have, was not here during all those hearings, so I would recommend for this one, you just recuse yourself.
Not recuse, abstain.
Or abstain, um, since you don't have the, you know, the background on this particular application, if you're okay with that.
Whatever, uh, I'm told I'll do.
Mr. Counselor, that was your recommendation, so I think, I think it's better that.
But I think you need, uh, you need him for the quorum.
We do.
So abstention is okay, keeps the quorum.
Okay. So we will.
Yes.
So we will do that. So number one, I'll, I'll read through the, the listing here, docket, LND CV. Nineteen six twelve oh nine four seven dash S, uh, David Marquitos and Al versus zoning board of appeals of the town of New Canaan and all. Pursuant to the memorandum of decision from the Superior Court Judicial District of Hartford dated May tenth, twenty twenty-one. In accordance with the judge's decision, the matter was referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its consideration in accordance with the judge's decision and was discussed on nine twenty twenty twenty-one, possible action and vote on a resolution, so. Um, Mr. Gellerman, do you want to give us a quick rundown on where we stand with this? Maybe a little bit of the background, so refresh everyone's memory.
Sure, sure. Um, well, it started with a zoning permit being issued for some interior renovations to a building. Uh, and that zoning permit was appealed to the ZBA, um, by Mr. and Mrs. Marquitos.
Now, this was for the building that was closest to um, the road, um.
Now you're, now you're gonna get me.
Yeah.
It was a building on the Grace Farms property.
There was an existing building.
And thank you.
There were some additional partitions being added.
Correct.
For office area. So the, um, ZBA uh, denied the appeal and determined that um, that partition, the zoning permit was, was properly issued. That it didn't expand anything, it didn't change any use, it didn't do anything that violated the special permit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Marquitos took an appeal to, from that decision of the ZBA to the Superior Court. It went to Judge Berger, who was the land use judge at the time, he's now retired. Uh, and he decided that he needed to remand it back to the zoning board of appeals, so that the zoning board of appeals could ask the P N Z what it meant by what the special permit covered and didn't cover, what could be included within the activities that were allowed under the special permit. I sidebar, since Judge Berger's retired, uh, I think that was a lousy decision. Um, in, in the sense of remanding a case to one board to get input from another board. Um, just doesn't make sense, even though the ZBA didn't didn't, uh, obviously adopt the original special permit, the P and Z did, so the P and Z knew better what it meant, but statutory scheme of appeals from, from ZBAs or from zoning permits are to the ZBA, not to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so. You know, he said, why shouldn't have this gone to the P and Z in our oral argument? My answer was because the statute says it goes to the ZBA. I mean, that's what statute says, so no other place for it to go, but so he thought he'd get around that by remanding it to the ZBA and asking them to get some input from the P and Z, which we did back in twenty twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
And we had a, um, a robust discussion, there were representatives of Marquitos were here and uh, Grace Farms, and I even think, um, I'm not sure if David Sherwood, who represents, um, other neighbors was allowed to speak that night, he might have been. But I bring that up because the reason it took so long to get to where we are now is that he filed a motion, that's Curt and Bissonette, you may have heard those names, that those were his clients. He filed a motion to intervene in this appeal. Um, even after it had been decided by Judge Berger, remember, this is post-decision. It remanded back and then, uh, David Sherwood made a motion with the court to intervene. Because he thought that the scope of the review by the P and Z might be broader than just this one issue of the, of the building being reconfigured. Thought it might impact other activities at Grace Farms, so he wanted to be in the case. Uh, Judge Berger denied that um, motion of his to intervene, and he took an appeal from that and went directly to the Supreme Court. So, uh, the Supreme Court ultimately, uh, sustained, um, Judge Berger's decision and said, no, you don't have a, a right to um, intervene. We, I, the town took no position on that, I mean, we, from our point of view, if there's one plaintiff for two, it didn't make much difference, so we didn't feel like it was necessary to spend a bunch of money of the towns and money to defend something that really didn't make a lot of difference, but Greens Farms defended it and Marquitos were involved, so they did their thing, but ultimately, the Supreme Court said, no, he can't be a party, so then, now we're all ready to go back to, to, to you to have this resolution adopted, well, the it initially was supposed to be created, this resolution, uh, by Lynn. Um, uh, Brooks Obney, she's no longer with the town and me. Together, she was gonna do a draft and I was gonna do it, well, Lynn was gone, obviously Sarah had no, um, familiarity to the case, so um, it kind of sat for a while admittedly, but eventually, um, with some encouragement from Amy Suchin, who represents the Marquitos', she wanted to get this done, and by rights, the remand said, we gotta do it. Uh, so I drafted a proposed resolution. I went and I listened to the tape because it was a while ago, so I listened to it, um. And you know, while it was, it was fairly lengthy, this is what I got out of it in terms of what the commission members said at the end of the arguments and the back and forth by the various lawyers, so, um, so so I drafted this resolution based on, um, what the commission said at that time in two thousand twenty-one. And, and that's what this is. I made one correction, by the way, i- if it was passed out earlier, there's a new copy that was handed out tonight. Um, I had the wrong, I in the second whereas clause, uh, it should have said did not violate, not violated. So um, but anyway. So the, the resolution, I think, speaks for itself, what will happen is if you adopt this, uh, it will go back to the ZBA next week, it's on the agenda to go back to the ZBA and they will take a look at this and, and they will decide um, whether or not they think their decision was correct, I mean, I'm not sure how they can decide it wasn't correct, but because this supports it, but it does go back to them with your input, and then I suspect what they would say is, yes, based on the P and Z's input, we think the, um, zoning permit was properly issued and the appeal to the ZBA. Now, I don't know where it goes from there, because Judge Berger, as I said, is retired. The new land use judge is Judge O'Handlin. Judge O'Handlin represented Grace Farms, so it's not going to him. Um, because he has a conflict, so I'm not sure where this is gonna end up. Um, and frankly, it's, I'm not worried about it, it's, it's really kind of somebody else's problem, I mean, we're a party, but um, I think it's up to Marquitos's attorney to figure out what happens to this, assuming uh, that you adopt this resolution and the ZBA agrees, so. So we'll see what happens, um, in that respect, but, um, you know, these, these three therefor's, you know, three paragraphs are, are to some extent um, virtually quotes from the, from the hearing that we had in two thousand twenty-one, so, uh, and you were active in that, um, um, discussion and made some, made some points, Kent, you did too, John, you did too. And Krista did as well, so there were various people who made, you know, specific comments, some of them agreed with what prior people had said, and this is sort of a summary of those, so. There you go.
So it feels kind of feels like a tennis match, right? We, we made a determination. It got kicked to ZBA, and the courts then said, well, ZBA has to kick it back to us, and then we have to kick it back to ZBA again.
Yeah.
That's basically what's going on.
Basically what's gonna happen.
I mean, I'm I, I don't have any different opinion other than what we determined in two thousand twenty-one. Um, in terms of the use of the property and how it's affiliated with Grace Farms and part of the property. I mean, we've, we've been through this, so I have no issue with the, the three findings here and the way they're worded, uh, well, the resolution as a whole. Um, I don't know if any of the commissioners do, but it seems more procedural than anything else at this point.
And this Commissioner Chris, I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman, it seems very straightforward, and certainly my recollection is consistent with our statements of this commission. I would be supportive of this resolution, given my current knowledge of the situation.
Then it's just a question of voting on it, somebody make a motion to adopt the resolution as written and vote, and then I'll get it to the ZBA.
Sir, do we need to read it into the record officially, do you think?
Uh, you don't need to, but if you want to, that's fine, I mean, this is a deliberation, so, um, it's, i- if it's unchanged from the written document. And if you feel you'd rather read it into the record, this action that you're taking tonight, in my opinion, is not appealable uh, in any way, shape or form, because all you're doing is giving, uh, advice to the ZBA.
Right.
A decision on anything.
It's reaffirmation that we still stand by our previous decision.
Right, so I, y- you know, it's not an appealable decision. That doesn't mean someone won't try to take an appeal, I don't know, but, uh, I don't think it's appeal.
So for the record, Mr. Casamans joined us, thank you. How are you? Do we need, uh, Mr. Casavant on this vote, or is four votes enough?
Four is plenty, as long as you have a quorum.
Yeah.
I don't know if Mr. Casavant was involved in two thousand twenty-one with.
I was not.
Okay. And we've recommended abstention, um, but so the four of you can, can go ahead and vote, you have a quorum.
That's fine, why don't I, why don't I read it real quick, we'll take a minute or two, and then we can vote on it. So the resolution as it reads, uh, whereas the commission met on September twentieth, twenty twenty-one to discuss and offer guidance on the New Canaan zoning board of appeals, the ZBA, in response to the direction of Judge Berger's remand order in the case of David Marquitos at Al versus zoning board of appeals to the town of New Canaan. LND CV nineteen dash six twelve oh nine five four dash S and mm-hmm. Whereas the purpose of the discussion was to determine whether the commission agreed with the ZBA's decision that the activities conducted by Grace Farms Foundation at the West Barn and the Operations Center did not violate the terms of the special permit by virtue of creating an intensification of use. And whereas the commission heard arguments and received information from attorneys representing the neighbors, Marquitos et al., Grace Farms Foundation, GFF, and the town attorney. And whereas the resolution, this resolution was delayed because other neighbors of Greens Farms Foundation sought to intervene in the case referenced above, which matter was ultimately decided by the Connecticut Supreme Court with a decision that did not permit the other neighbors to intervene. Now, therefore, it is resolved, three items. Item number one, the commission agrees with the findings and interpretation of the ZBA that the proposed activities were within the parameters of the special permit and that a building permit and zoning permit were properly issued for such activities. Item number two, the commission finds that similar activities are appropriate and within the scope of the special permit, provided that such activities do not expand the footprint of any approved, of any approved building or require an increase in the number of approved parking spots as set forth in the special permit. And number three, the commission finds that the changes in location of approved, approved activities that do not increase the size of any building, do not require additional parking, and that do not change the nature of the approved activities are per- permitted under the special permit. I'll take this to a vote.
We need some motions.
Oh, we need a motion, correct, uh, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I'll move to approve.
This is Commissioner Chris, I second Commissioner Nielsen's motion.
Thank you, any conditions?
No.
Okay, so we'll call it to a vote, Dan Radman, I vote yes, Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Kent Turner.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Thank you.
You have to ask for our votes.
Do we?
Well, they, they will say they're presumably, they're abstaining, so you can do that, they're sitting.
Mr. Knag.
Staying.
And Mr. Casavant.
Um, abstain.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Moving on to our next item. Six thirty-seven Valley Road. Upon application of David J. Rucci authorized agent for theater Darnall and Vicky Darnall or Darnell. Owner, owners for a two-lot subdivision of seven point zero six two acres of property in the two-acre zone at six thirty-seven Valley Road, map forty-five, block two seventy-seven, lot twenty-seven. Mr. Rucci.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you, uh, David Rucci here for, um, the Darnells, so the six thirty-seven, uh, Valley Road, I also have, um, on Zoom land, David Prush, who is, uh, an architect and has been working with, um, the Darnells for years on this property and um, I'm not sure we're gonna need him, but he's sort of been one of the drivers of this, uh, subdivision, uh, once the Darnells decided this is what they wanted to do. Um, I also have, uh, Tom Nelson here from Accord Engineering, did all the engineering, got the wetlands approvals, got the septic approvals, um, as well. Let me just hand these out.
They're not the large copies, it's time I ran out, trying something different. But if you can't see, um, they are colored. If you can't see it on.
Oh, my God.
Broad seller, I know.
And for the record, um, Mr. Knog and Mr. Casavant are seated for this application.
But I did bring this to the super. Cause I knew.
That's gonna make it bigger.
Thank you.
It should.
Okay. You can use your. You know. So this property is, um, on six thirty-seven Valley Road, it started off as, I know, it's not great, it started off as a twelve point seven seven acre piece of property. Um, and it is, similarly, it had its first cut about seven point oh four acres, and that's sort of where it sits today, is it about seven point, uh, oh four acres? Um, this is an overview of the map as to what it looks like now, it's a large piece of property, it's seven as I said, seven plus acres, it has, um, a residence on it, a pool, a tennis court, a paddle court, uh, multiple outbuildings, um, on the property as well as an accessory dwelling unit, which is right here on the screen. This is a view, um, looking up from Valley Road, and what you're looking at here is there's actually two entrances on this particular piece of property already, there's.
Mr. Rucci, yeah, the prior question or prior slide, please?
Yes.
Just one clarification, the building in the upper, I guess, upper left and the margin and the lower right, those are other properties and other.
Right, this is a different property right here. This is all the same property, basically, where my
Yeah.
Like, well, like that, pretty much.
But the building at the, at the very top, that's someone else's property.
That's the Potter's property.
And the lower right, that's someone else's.
This is someone else's as well, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Um, so they both see entrance, there's two entrances on this piece of property, this is, uh, one of the entrances. Um, and this sort of serves as more of where the paddle court is and the tennis court is and the pool. That's looking north, this is sort of looking south, that's looking at the main residence on the property. And this is what your subdivision's gonna look like, and it's pretty much kind of a straight line here. So you'll see, here was that first entrance that I showed you down on the bottom. This is going to be the new lot, twenty-seven B, about two point two point two eight two acres. And then this is the lot that's gonna remain, and essentially, this lot is gonna remain in exactly the same uh, condition that it's in today as far as the outbuildings. Um, but on this particular lot, the pool's gonna be removed, the paddle court's gonna be removed, all structures are gonna be removed on this particular lot, including the tennis court, including the paddle court. Um, the driveway will remain for the time being, so I'm pretty sure that's what they're gonna use as their entrance, uh, to the property.
So are you also gonna remove the pool?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, everything on this property is going to be removed, and you'll see that the property goes all the way across to the back, where Silver Mine, uh, across the Silver Mine River as well, both these properties, um, when they're finished, will each have, uh, portions of the property on the other side of Silver Mine River. This is sort of just, uh, a kind of a good picture, I'm taking this picture from Valley Road from the street. So this is sort of the front of Valley Road, right where that stone wall is, and you can kind of see as this goes forward where that property line's gonna be, and this is the edge of the pool. So, and it keeps going straight back from that particular point, here's kind of another picture of it. It's gonna go straight back from that particular piece of property. So the existing lot is four point seven eight acres, that's what's gonna remain. This is the entrance, the entrance is gonna stay on Valley Road, you can see it comes in, this is looking back out from Valley Road, I'm just trying to orientate you to where we're going, this is the black property line, you can see here is the, um, the flag that's kind of goes back, it's gonna go this way on the property. Obviously, all the stones can remove, the stone walls are gonna remove, the paddles are gonna remove, everything from this, this is part of the pool. Um, will end up being removed. Uh, this is the back of the property of the existing lot. So you, this will all remain, and I'm just showing this to you more to just show that sort of the open space that sits on the back of this particular piece of property, and I'll get to the open space issue, um, at the end of these slides. The new lot is gonna be twenty-seven B, it's two point two eight two acres. Um, it complies with all the zoning regulations, this is a better picture of the, um, kind of second entrance that I was showing you before, when we were just looking north on Valley Road. This is looking from that rear entrance back towards Valley Road. So back in here, there's a paddle court in this area, there's a, there's another structure that has, um, sort of like a shed, a green shed on the property. Um, and it does, those service the pool and whatever equipment that they need for that. Here's a picture of the tennis court that sits in the front, behind that, you can see where that, that driveway was, is right around this area here. And then this is the pool, once again, to be removed in the rear of the property, this is behind the tennis court. Um, what we're asking for is, um, and it's sort of generally what happens when you have, um, a subdivision, you have to provide open space. And, um, honestly, I didn't realize you actually even needed to have open space when you had less than two lots. And I was talking to Sarah about it, and, um, the regulation actually doesn't allow for, I always thought it was gonna be three or more, that's usually what the commission had looked at, if you have three or more lots, you would always provide open space. So in this particular case, we are requesting for a modification of the open space regulation, and the reason I'm showing this map is because you will see that there's essentially always gonna be open space on this particular piece of property, just based on the Silver Mine River. So the way the Silver Mine River sits here in between these two pieces of property, oh, and by the way, just to step back, we would have to, um, provide about thirty thousand square feet of open space, about ten percent of the subdivision. This, you can see on this property is one point one seven acres, which is on the other side of the Silver Mine River. This is essentially cannot be touched, I mean, there's not much we're gonna be able to do on the other side of this particular river, just based on wetland setbacks, building setbacks, etc., so essentially, it's gonna always function as an open space anyway. And I would say the same about this area in the back here on the new lot twenty-seven B, which is about point six two acres, so all told, this open space is going to exist will always, is actually much more than what we would have had to apply for actually, or actually earmark on this particular piece of property.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Rucci, this is Commissioner Chris, so be sure I'm understanding that it's, uh, as a practical matter, all of the, uh, land of these, let's call it two lots that are on the east side of the Silver Mine River. Broadly.
Yes.
And, um, there are no bridges over the river to access that?
There is one bridge right here on the back of this that will access this land, yes, and that's always been there, that's, um, that is, there it is. That is on slide fourteen, so they've always had this area in the back here as open space. But once again, there's not much you can do back in that particular space, even if you chose to. And all it would be if we wanted to earmark it as open spaces, we would say, you know, this cannot be used to put in, you know, any sort of additional structures or, um, uh, septic systems or you know, those types of areas that would all be, be open, and the, what I would say is that based on what we have there now and the way it's been functioning, that's really not something based on wetlands and setbacks with, uh, water courses, etc., that you're really gonna be able to practically do anyway.
If I'm, uh, sir, if I'm looking at this space.
Yeah.
Uh, this is only part of a, part of the space that's being pictured here, but, um, my, my sense is that the open space consists of some second growth forest and, uh, grass, which someone is mowing, is that a fair statement?
Yes.
And the intention is that it will continue to be managed in this manner.
Yeah, nothing is changing on this particular existing lot today.
And, um, the, the space behind the new lot is woodlands?
It's woodlands, it's, it's actually a very steep drop here, this is ascent, this is more what it looks like, it's mostly pond, honestly. And that's sort of what it looks like. So there's really not much you're gonna be able to do back there at all, this has much more of the, uh, Silver Mine River and a lot more, uh, water and wetlands in this particular area.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Um, as far as the site plan, uh, everything works as far as zoning works, as far as lot area, frontage. Um, and I'll let, um, Tom Nelson come up and talk a little bit about the site plan and, uh, the wetlands and the approvals we've already received, which should all be in your file as well.
All I have is this in the second page.
Okay.
Good evening, for the record, Tom Nelson, professional engineer with McCord Engineering. Uh, our office prepared the, uh, subdivision development plan for this project. Uh, you can see, uh, the proposed house and driveway, uh, on the screen. That is this concept that architect David Prush developed with the owners, um, and it's not necessarily uh, the final, final, uh, version, but it is very close, and we felt that it was probably most prudent knowing that that is, uh, likely to be the next phase of this project is to show you what we intend to ultimately and hopefully develop this lot with. So as, uh, David Rucci has already noted, there's a number of structures already on this new lot, this new lot twenty-seven B, including the tennis court, uh, the swimming pool, the swimming pool patio, paddle court, uh, portion of a, of the driveway and a shed. Um, with, uh, what we're proposing in the new development, we actually have almost a three thousand square foot reduction in impervious coverage on the lot. Uh, even with what we think is a fairly generously sized, uh, house, uh, and driveway that we've proposed. Uh, so with that reduction in impervious coverage, um, we are not required, we know that, uh, we will have a reduction in stormwater runoff. Uh, we did, however, uh, design a, uh, stormwater detention system in order to capture and treat the water quality runoff from the site, we were capturing the entire driveway and the entire house and sending that to an underground detention system at the rear of the house, uh, the soils in the property are very good. Uh, so we were able to take advantage of that, um, we have a fairly large system there. Uh, we anticipate will infiltrate that runoff and vast majority of storm events. The development itself, we uh, the, the intent was to keep it. On the existing developed portion of the site, as David Rucci mentioned, as we kind of get towards the back of the site, we have a steep slope that heads down to the Silver Mine River, the wetlands and the pond. Uh, we wanted to stay off of that slope, we wanted to stay kind of within the existing developed portion of the lot, so we're not touching. Uh, that existing undeveloped area uh, to the, to the east. Uh, and we're basically matching the, the line created by the existing paddle court and pool and patios, that's sort of the limit of this proposed development scheme. Um, the septic systems on the lot, uh, and, and the existing lot did need to be addressed, the existing house septic system actually. Uh, partially crosses into where the new lot is, so we've proposed a new septic system to serve the existing main house at the front of the property. We've designed a code compliance septic system for the existing cottage on lot twenty seven A, that does not need to be constructed, it is just there as a design to hold. As a placeholder in case it ever does need to be, and of course, we've designed a new septic system for the, the, the. Proposed house on lot twenty seven B, again, uh, the soils on the property are very good. Uh, X very conducive for both septic and drainage design, so those septic don't take up too much footprint. Um, the. Project has been approved by the health department, it's been approved by the wetlands department, it's been reviewed, and we had no comments from engineering either. Um, I think that's it, in a nutshell, if there's any questions on that aspect of it.
The town engineer did ask for clarification on the um. It, it looks like there was a pipe from the water company that. May or may not be actually on the property.
Yeah, so we were, we have uh, been working with this, and I don't know if you have any more to add on that, so. Uh, we've worked on this property for a number of years, in twenty eighteen, uh, a different project was proposed out here that was never constructed, we did meet at that time with the water company. Um, that, there's existing, uh, there was at one point, I believe that originally easement trades takes back to the eighteen seventies. Um, at one time, there was an active water service through uh, the front portion of this property, that is no longer active. Um, the water company no longer maintains or uses that water line. And what we are actively uh, trying to do is remove whatever those antiquated easements. Are from the property, because they no longer serve a purpose, in our conversations with the water company, we don't anticipate. That to be a problem as they, you know, they no longer have any reason to, to maintain or use that, that old easement.
Mr. Ruchy, do you have one question, this is Commissioner Chris. Um, in a nutshell, what is the reason for the ask for the? Ten percent, or then, ten percent may be a wrong number, but for the open space.
Well, I mean, just to the fact that. With the open space, we already naturally have it. And it's only a two lot subdivision, and I don't mean that to say that, you know, cavalierly, it's only a two lot subdivision, but. Really, what the open space is, is mostly designed for is, when you have three or more lots, and you're really trying to protect open space, and I just think for a two. Lot, open space where we're giving, you know, almost an acre and a half, is really not gonna be. Used in still protecting the natural environment, I mean, that's one of the conditions is yet. With open spaces, you want to be able to protect natural resources, rivers, streams, um, et cetera, this is already happening here. So we just didn't feel like it was gonna be necessarily something that we had to put on a map to show additional open space and encumber the property. In that particular way, because essentially that's gonna happen anyway. There's nothing you can do in those particular areas. Um, it was really just a function of. Making it easier than.
So just so that.
Thank you.
I'm clear to piggyback on that question, I'm looking at the subdivision regulations now, and it looks like there's four options. For meeting the open space requirement, dedication of land. Within the subdivision or elsewhere in New Canaan, a fee in lieu of open space donation. A combination of dedication of land and the fee in lieu of open space, or some other arrangement that the commission finds acceptable. So you're going with option D, which is uh, saying you're functionally providing open space without deed restricting it.
Correct. And in the past, when we've had subdivision, when I've had subdivisions in the past, and I can't speak for every one. We really with a two lot subdivision, we just, that just wasn't something that necessarily came up a lot. Um, and when we have a piece of property that's seven plus acres, I mean, it can't be divided again per se, or at least. It's gonna be very unlikely, you'd have to tear down that entire house if you were gonna tear it down again, but in that particular case, maybe that would be. More of an option, if I was doing three lots here, providing the open space would seem to make more sense than just with two.
Sorry. Have you? Checked the most recent subdivisions that we've done and uh, for two lot subdivisions and. What was involved, I specifically remember one up on Ponus, uh, that we did about. Probably about four years ago, five years ago.
So um, I honestly could not find any that were just two, um, I, I didn't find that bonus one, to be honest, but um. You know, with, this is different than zoning regulations, you're allowed to waive any regulation that's in here. Um, doesn't, there's no restriction on that, you, you don't have to follow your regulations and. Um, the reason why this has come up, I can't find it um, right now, but I know it's in there is that. Wetlands and water courses don't count as land that can be restricted as open space in these requirements, so. They're providing more, but. What they're providing technically doesn't count, which is why they're asking for this.
Well, I mean, I would say that even if we did the calculations with the water course and the wetlands. We're still gonna be over thirty thousand square feet. I mean, we have. Fifty thousand and. We have. Fifty thousand square feet. One point one seven acre and twenty seven thousand square feet on the vacant lot. So, I mean, even with the water course in here. I mean, I didn't do the calculations on it, but my gut is, is that all this is gonna still count, and that's gonna get us at least thirty thousand square feet.
If, if not more.
If not more, I mean, it's, it's. It's over an acre. You know, of, it's over, it's over an acre of um. I mean, here's the wetlands line, so it's kind of really right on the, on the edge of that. So my gut is that we still are gonna have more than thirty thousand square feet. By this calculate, by doing this particular calculation.
It, it's Commissioner Turner, I, I would agree, I think when you take into account for the floodplain. That you're probably even gonna go up even higher as far as your open space. You can't build.
Right, 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 I think to Sarah's point, what um. Um, the town planner is saying though, is that I can't technically count. Some of this towards open space, I can't actually count that as a, as a calculation, so what I'm saying is even if I didn't count. This river and this area, there should be plenty of open space regardless of that. Um, on here, and, and, and if there wasn't. That, yes, in and of itself would be a rationale and reason as to why I am requesting the um. The modification of that particular rule for the open space. And I think practically, you know, one of the things that open space is supposed to protect is obviously the neighbors. And um, in this particular case, once again, there's gonna be no. Adverse effect on neighboring properties, just based on where the river is. And what you can do on, and, you know, what, what you can do in these particular areas here. Uh, let me go back to the. To this, so I mean, you have your neighbors in here and here. But there's, there's just nothing that can be done in here. From a perspective of further development, I mean, this particular lot right now only has about a thousand square feet of coverage left on it. So even if you, whoops. This flat here only has a thousand square feet of coverage on it, this has uh. Uh, ninety eight hun- actually less than that. It's existing coverage is ninety eight hundred, it's allowable coverage is ten thousand seventy two. So even if you wanted to build in here, you would have to take something down here in order to do that, but that's how are you gonna get to it, you're landlocked on it anyway. So you'd have to cross a river and get a wetlands crossing to get to that particular point, to even do something back there. Which is just not, it's just not something that's gonna happen, and in this particular case. You have the same, you have the same situation, you have less coverage in this particular area, but once again, why would you do a crossing, there's nothing to build back in here, you can't do it. So everything's gonna have to be pushed to the front of this property anyway.
Are you opposed to having deed restriction?
No.
So if there was a deed restriction, then everything west for both properties, everything west of the Silver Mine River is. Deemed. Non-buildable land? I think it would be east, east. Sorry, oh, it's east, sorry, yeah, east of the Silver Mine River.
Well, I mean. I guess the question to me, what does that mean, non-buildable, buildable land? It would just be a conservation easement, but the conservation easement is, is essentially just um. You know, keeping it in its natural state, et cetera, but right now, there are some items there, so the natural state would still be. The bridge that's sitting there right now, and the lawns that are still sitting there right now. I wouldn't be taking that apart or up.
Grandfather.
Mr. Rucci could, could ask a question with respect, actually. Um, I'm intrigued by the fact that there was a prior development plan that was not pursued. So I'd like to ask a hypothetical question, this may actually go to um, Mr. Nelson, but. If the owner of the existing four point eight acre property. Were willing to. Take down the ADU. Could he in fact subdivide that property again?
Uh, probably not, because he don't think he has the frontage on the front, he could try to do a rear lot. Um, on the property. I don't know, I mean, you need to put septics in, you need to put the water in. Don't know, I mean. I'm not sure. It would be tight. But I don't know, I mean, obviously, if he wanted to do that. Certainly be more valuable to him to try and do that today. But he's planning on staying in this house, I mean, that would be a pretty. I don't know, don't know if he could do or not, the other project that was done on this property, by the way, was we were, we had received a special permit. Uh, to put in uh, an accessory structure here. Uh, um, dwelling unit here, so we were gonna take down the paddle court. And we were gonna put an accessory dwelling unit here, that was what the.
That was the.
That would be original.
Okay.
Uh, that we, that we tried to, uh, that we did get approval for actually. Um, but then their situation changed, they were gonna bring their mother in to live on the property, and that, that all changed.
So, so the prior was not a subdivision plan?
No, no, it was uh, it was to convert the paddle court to a um, um, accessory dwelling unit.
So is it your uh. Statement that uh, that, that, that prior approval is now superseded and not, and not something that's going to be uh, pursued?
Well, it, it can't be, because we don't have the same, one of, one of the rationales that. Under that approval was that we had a, a separate um, zone unit. So you essentially need a two acre zone unit for every single dwelling that you have there, so we had the house, that was one zone unit. We had the accessory dwelling unit here, that was the second dwelling unit, and then we had a third one we could put here, because we had seven acres. So we had, you know, two, four, six, we had two acres for each, that would not have been approved, had we had less than that amount.
And so you agreed that that.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be possible if it got subdivided, subdivided, it's not possible.
So I wanna clarify, I um, I did just find a subdivision that was just two lots from twenty eighteen, that Mr. Ruchy. No, it was um, ninety five Devonwood, and there was no proposed um, open space, but then a condition of approval was that a conservation easement be put over. A wetland area.
Um, Mr. Ruchi, this is Commissioner Chris, um, regarding a conservation easement. Would a conservation easement along the lines of, uh, once we define the land, I think we can do that relatively straightforwardly. But that um, the uh, current uh, lawn area may not be expanded. So you can't cut down trees and expand it, and that any structures that are on the air, on the uh, property be grandfathered and may be repaired. Uh, and replaced if necessary, but can't be expanded, as I understand it, the only structure would be the end of the bridge.
I believe that's the only structure, I have not actually crossed the bridge and gone all the way back there, but it doesn't look like there's anything else. Based on this particular maps, because it would have been shown.
Essentially, any structure that's there gets to stay and be repaired, but that's it. And the lawn does not get expanded, you can shrink it, but you can't expand it, would that be acceptable to the?
Um, I think I'd, I'd ask David Prosh, who's on, if, if he could. Speak to that, he's much more in contact with the client than um. Than I have been, at least as far as a question like that would go. Um, is he on, David?
I believe so.
Essentially, Mr. Ruchi, what I'm asking is that essentially anything that's there. Can stay, he's a grandfathered, and, but that you can't do anything else. So that you're conserving existing conditions is in effect what it boils down to.
Yeah, and, and in general, I'm not opposed to that, I just think it's a, it's, it's still a large area to encumber, I mean, it still. Would appear to me to be more than ten percent. And, and that's sort of what I'm, uh, you know. Precedent is also something, and so, you know, I, I would rather not see something just from not only this particular application, but other application going forward that. Something that more than ten percent is actually being, uh, you know, imposed on this particular client, um. And you know, maybe that runs counter to my argument, that nothing can ever happen there, but I, I mean, I just don't think it, there is nothing that can happen there, but to encumber it by more than ten percent. I think it's something that I just, as a land use person, you know, it's not consistent either with the, with the particular subdivision regs.
Yes, except you, you're already claiming as part of that, and I know you said you didn't do the calculation. Of how much was wetlands and how much is a river, and therefore not an eligible component, but a deed restriction across land that you've asserted. Won't be used anyway, I don't think that we're talking about twenty percent as a population here, it's still, I mean, perhaps we need to do that calculation. But um, you know, y- you can't have this both ways, right, say that it's not gonna be used, and most of it. Is, is in its fine, where it conserves state, and yet, um, we don't wanna actually have a deed restriction on it.
Well, I mean, if the deed restriction was similar to that of Devonwood, where it was protecting the Silver Mine River. And the ponds, and you know, the conservation, I mean, I think that gets protected anyway, I'm not really sure what anyone could do to that regardless. Um, you know, that's not something I'm opposed to. Uh, or the client might be opposed to, but I mean, I, I, we can ask David Prosh, who's on the phone, like I said, he has more contact with my client. With the client and what his plans are than, than I know, so. Is he on?
He's on, yeah.
Oh, David, can you speak to that at all?
Okay, yeah, I'm unmuted, okay. Um, well, I think, I think um, what Dave said earlier is there's actually very, there's little coverage left available. On uh, the four point seven acre lot, I don't know that they could actually. Build anything if they wanted to, um, I haven't heard anything. Um, from Mr. Darnell about, you know, uh, expanding or um, ever doing anything back there. Um, actually, you know, we're, we've been developing this new house, and he may move into the new house, um. And uh, uh. Over on the, you know, the lot where that we're creating. Um, but I, you know, once we got this back, I saw that really there's no ability actually to. Even expand the existing house. Um, at this point, um, uh, on that lot, which um, big enough, and it, it probably doesn't need to be. So I wouldn't anticipate that anyone would be doing over anything over there.
Yeah, I think, David, the question is whether or not we think the Darnells. Would have any issue if the, if the, if the commission put a condition on this that we. You know, essentially say that that's gonna be open space um, today. On this particular approval, and I don't know if I, if I know the question.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know the answer to that, because it hasn't come up in, in, in discussion. Um, that I, I mean, if it, it's necessary, I don't think they would have a problem. Uh, with it, because I don't think anybody would uh. You know, drug, you know, even plan to disturb that, that property, there's quite a bit of uh. Not only we have a wetland, we have wetland setback in most of that, and. Uh, but um, as far as putting some kind of a conservation easement back there. We'd have to ask them directly, I think, I, I don't know that I can actually speak to that, because it's really never come up for discussion.
Yeah, Mr. uh, Mr. Ruchi, this is Commissioner Chris, what I'm. Guess I'm getting at are, you know, what does open space mean as a practical matter, when you get down to the nitty gritty, and then if you. Use the term conservation easement. Begs the question of, you know, what is restricted and what is not restricted, so it's definition of those two terms. Granted, I'll, I will grant you that, given the geography, there's not much you can do, it is a practical matter, given existing limits. Of setbacks and water and all the rest, but nevertheless, um. Understanding exactly what these terms mean would be helpful to me in any case.
Yeah, I mean, generally with the conservation easement, um, it would limit the, uh, what you can do in that particular area as far as like removing trees, or, um, putting up structures, um, uh, you know, uh, mowing, et cetera, I mean, usually conservation easement, I mean, it can be written anyway, as to what you're allowed, not allowed to do. Um, and then, I mean, open space is, is really something that's been designed within these particular regulations, that's supposed to protect the neighboring properties. So, you know, it's something that you're giving back to, uh, the neighborhood for the ability to subdivide. And, um, you know, the only other thing that you would have, I mean, I had, I had a subdivision where you know, one of the requirements for open spaces, we did a preamulation wall. It wasn't even open space, but we just said that this particular wall around these particular properties would never be touched. And it always had to be remained in that particular, because it was a nice wall, it was ones over on Weed Street. So it went around the entire piece of property, and that's something that was an easement, that these, the people who ended up buying those particular properties um, had to maintain that wall. So it's not always an open space, that was something that the commission looked at, said, well, we'll, we'll take that instead of ten percent, we'd rather have that stone wall protected, and we'd rather have it, that the owners of the properties will always keep that um, stone wall in its current condition, not move it, make it larger, et cetera. So it's not always, you know, i- i- it's kind of a component to help the neighborhood as much as everything else. Um, then it's, then it's open space or conservation easement, it can be other things. Just because, and, and to your point, like, you know, you can buy it, right, I mean, there's a fee in lieu of open space. So you can always go and just pay to be like, hey, well, this is going to be used now for I'm not sure what the open, the open space fund is now used for the town to go buy open space. Um, I mean, I guess what I would say to this is, if the, if the commission felt like they couldn't modify this, uh, this particular rule, um, based on what's there today, then, um, you know, I think it's obviously well within their rights to move forward and, and, and approve the subdivision, uh, with some sort of conservation easement, or, um, uh, an open space provision to be added to this map in one way, shape, or form. Um, I know, I can't talk to the Darnells now, because they're traveling, so I can't tell you whether they accept that or not, and I guess if they didn't accept that, I'd have to come back and and ask for that to be modified in one way, shape, or form. Um, but in the past, as I've said, we've just, most of the two lots of divisions, this has just not really been an issue. The open space, for better or for worse, it just hasn't been an issue, it hasn't been something that and especially in a seven acre piece of property, where you have a lot of open space to begin with, in a, in a two acre zone, and you're surrounded by the Silvermine River, which is providing that buffer as well. It just hasn't been something that's come up. Um.
Thank you.
Can, can we continue this matter so that, uh, uh, and bring it up again next, next month, do we have any time constraints to prevent, prevent us from doing that?
You could, it's just up to the commission on whether they're So you can, but it
We can, we have, we have to determine what we're asking the client or the applicant to come back to us with, and
Right.
Um, we can do that, I think we have to be clear. And what I'm concerned about, and Mr. Ritchie touched on it, is precedent. Right, um, trying to establish an excess amount of conservation easement or protected area above and beyond the ten percent. Right, so I, I think maybe the right way is to have the, the civil engineer to revisit the site map and identify a ten percent area that would because in, in essence, it would be ten percent of each of the two new, two new lots. That is most likely going to be east of the Silvermine Li- River that would qualify for a conservation easement. And may, that might not be the entirety of that portion of soil east of the river, it might be some portion of it. But then that would, that would satisfy the regulations in terms of the ten percent, it would it would memorialize the conservation easement and allow us to, to do the subdivision without creating an, a precedent that requires too much set aside land.
Well, also, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Chris, that if the land on the east, to the east of the Silvermine is, um, more than ten percent of the combined lots. Um, you know, some of it's going to end up being stranded, because it's going to be this, you know, island. It is already becomes, as a practical matter, open space, because there's no way you can access it, so
Yeah.
Um, that naturally happens, but it's not technically open space. But I, I, your, your, your approach seems very reasonable to me.
Well, I, I would also suggest, and it would be difficult for me, looking at the boundaries here, it might not be accessible to the Darnells or the other property, but they have lots that exceed lot limit coverage, right? If a neighbor wished to buy it from the other side, it could be accessed, right? And, and that's why I'm back, I actually like the eloquence of, of our chairman's suggestion here, which has come up with a ten percent deed restriction, that serves the policy objective. It, I don't think does any harm at all, in fact, might even benefit the owner by virtue of whatever the value of a contribution, the conservation easement is, and, and would prevent to any, any, you know, expansion of the rule.
Does that work?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to the mission, I just would go back to this, I'd just go back to the same point, that I just think for a two lot subdivision in of this nature, and, and, I mean, this this would be one I, I would think you would give a modification for, more than any other one that would ever come in front of you, is, is my only when I look at this particular piece of property and look at the lands that you're going to come, that's going to come through here, that could even be subdivided. This one seems to be kind of an easy one for the commission, although I understand what, what you're asking. Um.
But you have to look at it from our standpoint as well. It kind of seems like an easy one to us to establish a conservation easement on piece of, on two pieces of property that effectively have unusable land on the east end.
Yeah, or, or the other way is that, then when would you ever give a modification? Because, I mean, in a weird way, like, there's, I mean, you can make the argument that I mean, this is a perfect opportunity for a modification, because it kind of meets all the, the regs as well, that just
I can give you an example, if there was a four acre parcel that we're splitting into two acre, or let's say a two acre parcel, we're splitting into two one acre parcels. Um, and the remaining, because of the, the configuration of the site, the remaining buildable area within regulated setbacks for each of those remaining one acres. If you were to remove or set aside a conservation easement, it would undermine and, and of materially affect the amount of building coverage those particular lots could have. In this particular case, that's not going to happen, because you're never going to be able to build on that side of the river anyway. Right, so it seems like we're, we're all trying to get to the same agreement here, I, I just, I don't see why there would be hesitation on the part of the applicant to just set it aside as a conservation easement and call it a day.
I mean, I, I just can't answer from, because it's not here, so, I mean, that
We don't need that answer tonight, we're just, I think that's our direction to you, is take it back to the, to the client, to the applicant with that recommendation, and see what they say.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie.
Yep.
So this is continued to the October?
This is, sorry?
To the October meeting?
Yes, we'll continue this to the October meeting.
Uh, just, not to unravel that, I assume there were no people here who wanted to speak on it?
Oh, yeah, good point. Uh, to the public, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this application?
I would simply say, great discussion. Good evening, my name is Chris Shipper, I'm Chair of the Conservation Commission, and sitting in on this discussion was very helpful, and I think continuing to support open space provisions is an important aspect of what we do, so thank you for that discussion.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? And we have no one in Zoom land, right? Nothing. All right, this, uh, this application is continued to next month. We had all of us seated for this one.
Yep.
Because next month I'm not here.
So it's still five?
Yeah, which will be fine. Okay, next application, one, one, two, four, eleven twenty-four Valley Road. Upon application of Brian McCann, Holman and Comley Authorized Agent for First Taxing District of the City of Norwalk, owners for a special permit approval pursuant to sections three point six point B to allow for the first taxing district of the city of Norwalk, F, known as FTD, uh, to deed one point eight two acres of land, as well as the eighteen oh five farmhouse to the New Canaan Land Trust, NCLT, which is intended to be used as described in the attachments. The first taxing district will retain parcel A of approximately two point one seven acres, and would like to be recognized as a legally non-conforming lot, and preserve the ability to develop this lot in the four acre zone at eleven twenty-four Valley Road, map forty-seven, block one oh five, lot seventy-seven. Welcome.
Good evening.
State your name and
Uh, Brian McCann from Holman Comley, I represent the First Taxing District.
Thank you.
And, um, for some, something completely different, I'd like to talk about open space preservation on Valley Road.
Um, topic of the night.
The First Taxing District of Norwalk is, among other things, a municipal, uh, water utility company. Um, they purchased eleven twenty-four Valley Road in two thousand and six for two point two five million dollars. The property consists of four acres of land, and includes a colonial sto- style dwelling, which was built in seventeen fifty. The other improvements on the property include a shed, which is not original to the dwelling. And there's also a walkway path with, which connects the property to the adjacent brown, uh, preserve, which is owned by the New Canaan Land Trust. While the land is and has been a significant acquisition for the district due to its proximity to the reservoir, the group's reservoir, and the reservoir's accessway, uh, the dwelling was and is more of a liability than an asset to the district. The district entered, entered the property into its watershed plan and requested watershed municipal tax treatment from the town. The town didn't immediately agree, but the town, uh, the parties were able to reach, uh, a settlement agreement in that matter. So the property, um, is currently in receiving that tax treatment. Which is, was their intention all along to, uh, to, uh, conserve and preserve the land adjacent to the reservoir um, for, uh, watershed protection, for water quality protection. Um, but, um, we're presented with this issue regarding the, the dwelling. Um, and we have a party that is interested in the dwelling. That is the New Canaan Land Trust, um, they do desire the twenty, uh, two hundred and seven year old antique dwelling. And in recent years, uh, since relations and communications between the First Taxing District and the New Canaan Land Trust uh, have dramatically improved, the parties began discussions and negotiations regarding what can be done to preserve this antique dwelling. Many options, um, uh, were considered and explored. Um, but one of the more recent, uh, iterations included transferring a smaller portion of the property to the land trust. Um, however, the land trust explained to us, the district, that they desired to have, uh, more of the walking trail encapsulated in the, uh, in the property. So we came up with a new iteration that appears in front of you, which, um, is close to two acres and, uh, captures most of that walking trail. Um, the idea is that, uh, the remaining portion of the walking trail can be relocated onto the property. Um, onto the what may soon become the New Canaan Land Trust property, um, but there's a rock outcropping, uh, closer to the road, so this will leave enough room where we don't have to fight, where they don't have to fight with, with the rock outcropping. Um, we've reached a, the parties have reached a memorandum of understanding, uh, in light of their improved relations. Um, this covers, uh, a, a whole host of matters, including, uh, treatment, uh, permits and and different, uh, um, treatments of the, uh, reservoir and, and, um, improvement of the dam structure. Um, and this MOU also includes, um, the, uh, conveyance of the eleven twenty-four, uh, Valley House, uh, uh, and its curtilage to the, the land trust. The parties learned about the flexibility for open space provision within the regulations, and we believe that this can offer a regulatory mechanism that could facilitate the transfer. Now, um, the district, um, as your chairman said, the district, uh, does desire to improve the remainder portion of the lot with a non-occupied maintenance building. Uh, this would be used to, uh, house some maintenance equipment um, and materials for the reservoir. This building will be designed to have an appearance of a traditional barn structure. Um, I believe it's not to exceed a fifty by fifty foot, uh, footprint. And that is, uh, also stipulated in the MOU. Um, therefore, it's the intention of the district that this lot receives status as a legal non-conforming, uh, building lot as varied by the open space regulation, the open space provision regulation. Uh, the, the district has yet to received, receive the proposed, uh, deed restriction. Uh, however, we do anticipate that it will be, uh, quite standard, um, open space, uh, restriction, deed restriction, with perhaps one, uh, uh, modification, which is the, uh, land trust will propose a carve out, for lack of a better term, so that it may reserve the right to, um, restore the two hundred and seven year old structure, which it's possible it needs some, some restoration, or they desire some, some restoration. Um, it's my understanding that funds for the purchase and restoration of the farmhouse has received approval from Board of Selectmen, Town Council, Board of Finance. And I recently learned and watched, um, that it received the eight twenty-four approval, so thank you for that. Um, if the open space provision were to be approved, it would, uh, meet a couple, um, important, uh, goals. Um, one would be the obvious preservation of the two hundred and seven year old farmhouse. Um, the other would be improving the brown preserve by reuniting the original farmland parcels together. And the third would be, um, excuse me, there, there would be four. The, the third would be the provision of open, additional open space, and the fourth would be providing a, um, headquarters for the New Canaan Land Trust, which would allow it facilitated to um, uh, maintain and improve their land preservation operations, so that's a good, a good thing. Um, just looking at the, the regulation, uh, quickly. Um, the requirements are that it is, uh, referred, uh, it receives the appropriate referrals to Environmental Commission, Parks and Recreation. I, I understand that it's received, it's received that, um, that the land be dedicated to a land conservation organization, uh, and preserved in perpetuity, perpetuity, excuse me, we, we've satisfied that. Uh, the proposed open space dedication is not encumbered by an accessway or other easements in favor of others. Uh, that we've satisfied that, any encumbrance placed on the land so dedicated shall not restrict possible future establishment of a greenway trail. I believe we satisfied that, although I'm not exactly sure what that one means, but, um, and then lastly, uh, uh, that you shall receive a copy of the deed restriction. And, uh, we're hopeful that the commission would consider, um, possibly, uh, an administrative review, if, if it believes that that's, um, appropriate. I know this, um, there is some I know this um, there is some desire to move this transaction forward. And I think, you know, if if the commission feels it's appropriate for approval with with condition, we'd be more than. Amenable for review with the town attorney, um Ms. Carey and and others. Lastly, um. I I've read the uh the staff report. Thank you for the planner's report. Thank you for that. I understand that um. With the this specific um proposed separation, it may not be the stereotypical. Uh open space preservation where the dwelling um is. Not the area that's being preserved. We are the opposite this, we're proposing the opposite. So it's not, it's not your typical um open space provision. Uh application, but we firmly believe that it meets the entirety of the spirit of the regulation and. As I said, perhaps even more so because of the multiple um benefits and goals that we've achieved. Um the other um, the other. Question that I received that I read in the planner's report was um. Couldn't the um remainder lot, what I'm calling remainder lot. Be merged into la- other lands of the district. Um well, we we wouldn't need this creative solution and if we desire to do that, but. We um, we believe that um we've sacrificed a a little uh quite a bit of the value of the property. We've sold it, we've we've agreed to sell it for half a million dollars after buying it for two point two five million dollars. Um and. You know, the district does have to answer to constituents, ratepayers. It does operate with fiduciary duty. And um. We believe that this uh will preserve some of the value of the land and also. Uh you know, meet some of our goals with regard to the maintenance uh buildings. So. It's it is, it's a compromise.
I mean, I I'm not quite sure that I understood that reasoning. Uh. Isn't it, isn't it true that this land that you own that's being referred to where you could, the additional parcel that you could merge the two point one seven. Parcel into, isn't that part of the reservoir? You're not going to build there either, right?
The fact that we're not going to build there is the reason why we don't want to merge the two lots. And we want to reserve the right to build on this remainder on the two point one seven acres.
Sir, this is Commissioner Chris. I've been just a couple of questions if I may. The um on the south end of this property, there's a hatchmark picture of easement. Could you chat a bit about? That to us.
Sure.
Details.
Sure. The surveyor um from Redness and Mead located that on the lot. To demonstrate adequate access and frontage. In the event that that's. Important, that land that it it's not truly an access easement because the land that it sits on is also land of the first taxing district. Typical definition of his easement is right to others.
Well, it says proposed excess easement, so I'm using that.
No, no, no. Uh yeah, no, no, no. I'm not criticizing your use. You're you're reading right from the plan. I'm just saying it's not. Uh it may be a little bit of a misnomer. The purpose of that was to show, to demonstrate to you, the commission, that if that lot were. Created. That it would have adequate access to a public road.
So if I, so this hatchmark is now owned by the first testing district, yes?
Yes.
And it will continue to be owned by the first taxing district?
Yes.
And it says proposed X in favor of parcel A, which is the one you are suggesting you would like to keep. Um would the would parcel B also have access to this to access its own property?
No.
No, so it would access its property off Valley Road.
Correct.
Right, okay. And um so. Uh and so proposed access easement under parcel A. And then beyond parcel A, there's a road I know, and then there's the water. So is that basically the geography of this? So there's parcel parcel A, some little bit of woods, there's a road. And then there's the the reservoirs that that's this.
The accessway that you are referring to. Uh travels all the way down to the group's reservoir.
It's perplexing me, me mind just not being a little slow tonight, but that since the first taxing district already owns this piece of. Uh this um called entryway off of the corner of Benedict Hill and Valley. I assume you have use of it for vehicles if you want to. Why do you say excess easement in favor of parcel? I'm, you lost me on that one, so.
I didn't, I, I'm critical of it too.
Okay, uh it's not just me, okay.
Well, isn't the reality, it's if if you ever sell that piece of land, it has to have access to a road. So it doesn't really have any.
Yes.
Meaning in the sense when.
But it has to be tied to the property.
And we're willing to grant ourselves or, you know.
Okay.
There, well, actually it does have it. No, I I take it back. It does have a significance because the the property. At eleven twenty four Valley Road, I believe is. Owned in a separate entity. If well, if it does, then it would have significant.
Fair enough. And either way, it's now and will in the future be owned by the first taxing district.
That's correct.
Um and it will not restrict access to the uh parcel B since they have access from the uh. From the roadway of Valley.
Yes, there's um, there's a, an area. I'll I'll leave the design more to the future owners of the property, but there. You might be aware, there's there is a little pull off area, uh maybe a hundred feet up from that accessway road. Where the grade is actually cut out a little more. I think it's um, I think it was, you know, intended to. Uh be a grade level access to the first floor of the farmhouse. And there's a little, there's a little pull off there. I would anticipate they'd probably want to create. Maybe another two or three parking spaces, but that's the level area where I. If I were designing it, that's where I would create.
Also, I noticed that on the um, on the um. Survey drawing, it says this portion of existing trail to be real relocated entirely onto parcel B, which is. Intended to be the land trust property. And so that um essentially will be abandoned on parcel A. And redesigned in some manner that's not specified, but on parcel parcel B. Is that what's being?
That's accurate.
And you mentioned that there are uh planned uh structure to go on to parcel A, which will not be a dwelling unit.
Correct.
Uh and there will be restrictions on its footprint.
Correct.
And size and um design. Okay, um will there be, uh do you have electricity you're gonna need there or anything other utilities, water? Septic for a toilet or something?
Water.
I know you got water, but this is actually go to this property. I don't know. I know it's.
We have access to water. Um it. I I'm actually not sure about the, I know right now it's proposed for storage. Daytime access storage, so um. It 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 might need some overhead lighting, but other than that.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um are we? As part of this application, are we hearing from the land trust at all?
Um if you have questions, yes, I don't know if they were planning to speak. Um.
I think they were planning to speak. I'd.
Um how long is the? Taxing district own the property?
Two thousand six, February two thousand six.
Property was for sale in two thousand sixteen, right? The entire parcel?
Ye- yes.
And didn't sell, didn't, didn't go anywhere?
Not at the asking price.
And that was the entire four acre parcel at the time?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Chris. One of the question on parcel A and partial B. My recollection on many old farmsteads is sometimes odd things get dumped in odd places and you have septic cesspools stuck in various spots. You have old oil tanks and so forth. Have there been any um surveys of the property? Looking for any type of environmental hazard or other structures, buried items, anything like that? You could share with us.
Yes, I believe the, I think that's a good dovetail. Would you guys mind? I believe there was some investigation as part of the um. Due diligence uh from the land trust, and I believe the septic was one of those investigations, but maybe they could confirm.
Thank you.
I don't know. What's the question?
Uh could you identify yourself, sir?
Uh my name is Art Berry. I know some of you. I don't know all of you. Um. Uh I've been a New Canaan resident for thirty nine years. I live at uh ten Saint John Place here in the. Down the, well, the good baseball throw, I could hit it from here and not now, but I years ago, maybe. I think you all know about the land trust. The land trust is uh sixty three years old, uh fifty, excuse me, fifty six years old. Um we were founded in the fall when Waveney was uh consummated in the spring of nineteen sixty seven. We're nationally accredited. We've just gone through our second process of renewing that uh designation. And uh we're tickled to to look at this opportunity. It's uh. Use an over and overused uh phrase, it's a win win. I mean, we've been looking for headquarters for. About eight years and uh this could be uh. A residence for a full time executive director, which we would like to have available. It's a historic house, as you know. And um it abuts an existing property of ours.
Thank you, sir. Um Commissioner Chris again. Uh has the land trust or any other body uh examined the the um parcel B as identified in the submission? For any um environmental hazards, old agricultural waste being dumped, anything else that maybe uh. Maybe an issue or a hazard.
You want to speak there?
Hello, Commissioners. I am John Winter. I am the executive director of the New Canaan Land Trust uh here. About a year now, after serving as in a similar function for three other land trusts over the last thirty years or so. Recently relocated to Connecticut where I grew up in Trumbull. Uh to be closer to aging parents and was fortunate enough to get the New Canaan job. And uh work with these fine people here, six of whom on our board have joined us tonight in a show of uh. Uh kind of solidarity and appreciation for the opportunity to speak with you. Um I to answer your question, Commissioner Chris, uh we've done a visual inspection. Uh but have not done uh soil testing uh for uh for toxics as of as of this point. And have found nothing from that visual inspection of the uh of the property of of the. Piece that uh will connect the uh current uh house portion to our um the brown preserve behind us.
Are there intended to be, this Commissioner Chris again, any um restrictions on parcel B regarding additional structures or anything like that? Assuming you obtain ownership.
Um then this would go to the deed restriction, you know, question, what we kind of foresee uh when that uh. When those documents are uh are submitted is kind of two pieces. Uh let's call it the developed area, which would be the area near the near and around the existing house and outbuildings. And uh a section, a second undeveloped portion. Uh which will be contiguous and join to the uh existing ground preserve. Where we uh will uh likely not see additional uh development on that partial.
Thank you.
You mentioned that this building will now become your headquarters?
Yes.
So what exactly what uses will be happening at the building? Will there be, what level of traffic will there be at the building? Will there be increased number of parking? Is was in and more intensive use of parking on the property?
Uh what we see is um two functions, the uh staff housing likely on the upper level. And uh office space on the lower level. We currently have two employees. Um full time and a part time, what we call stewardship to people who do our land maintenance, who join us uh in the summertime. We see the bottom floor as uh providing office space. And the outbuildings, storage for our tools and uh and equipment. Um as currently designed, I think we've mentioned before that the access, I mean, the parking would be off Valley Road. And uh we foresee probably uh don't know the exact number, but maybe four or five parking spots there. For uh for the executive directors uh vehicles, the second employee's vehicles and the pickup truck that we use for our. Uh existing land maintenance and what have you. Uh and you know, maybe one or two others for occasional visits by board members and uh. And the uh public donors who we might invite uh in into the house for a uh for a meeting.
I do want to clarify that um as of right, they're allowed um. The person that resides there can work there full time and they can have one nonresident work there full time. And they wouldn't need any sort of commission approval to do that.
No, understood, but um. Not worried about that. I'm more worried about the impact on additional parking requirements. Uh you mentioned, you know, off of Valley Road, but the um right now, the the. Natural parking spot is that easement area that's identified on the site plan. But as as we are all aware that who knows that easement is going to carry with parcel A, not parcel B. So we don't know what's going to happen with that in the future. Um so will you be. Modifying the site to provide a parking area on parcel B specifically?
Uh only to the extent that we will add, we expect to add those additional parking spots uh along the Valley Road edge. Currently visitors to the uh nature preserve park on uh Colonial Drive.
You'll drive, what is Colonial Drive? Oh, well, so. Back up in there.
Not allowed to.
Yeah, which are there, yeah.
Park on the street.
So that, yeah, they're they're technically not a good place to park, but um. When you say park off of the Valley Road, like again, am I understanding that you're going to have people parking in that easement area?
Uh no, no, the we don't, we do not have access to the easement area.
Right, so in order for you to provide parking on your property, you're going to need to create a parking area on parcel B.
Correct, which exists now.
It does?
Well, it's it's grass, it it's grassy. We would improve it likely with, you know, gravel and what have you.
So is that what you were referring to as the curb cut or the? The the cut in Valley Road or if someone was referring to it, that's over by the shed?
Yes, over by the shed.
So you would create parking area back in there?
Yes.
I see.
So sir, if I understand it correctly, you have one entry off of valley, which is gravel leading to the shed. Which is drivable?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And a second one that is closer to the residence where it says on the, on the map here, parking area.
Yes.
Okay, and that um those the what? How many uh vehicles can you put there?
Now, probably three, four.
Is the um, is the land trust intending to do any um re landscaping or other changing of the. Flora on the parcel B? Planting trees, bushes?
Yeah, there's, there's no uh specific plan drawn up as of yet, you know, I think that'll be something that'll. Come to fruition pretty quickly and uh decide, you know, what we want to do with that.
Also, it was uh stated by um the first taxing district. That the um existing trail that goes onto parcel A at the moment uh would be abandoned and that the. What uh of the trail that is on parcel B would be redrawn and I would assume go to. Or connect with the Land Conservation Trust Inc. property to the north. would be redrawn and I would assume go to or connect with the Land Conservation Trust Inc. property to the north.
Exactly.
Exactly correct.
There's just a little piece that winds on the A that would come over.
And do you have any drawings exactly what that would be or not? But there would be a, this would be a dirt path?
Yes.
It wouldn't be paved or anything like that. Okay, maybe dirt.
I would say probably, what do you think, maybe half of that path is already there?
At least, yeah.
Okay. But that's not in the drawings, but it's just it would be a dirt path from that. Okay.
To the existing walking trail along
And and it connects with the whole or the whole, not the the separation in the stone wall on the north end. There should show, should be a little gap there if they drew the wall.
Good, thank you. Sarah, where where do we stand on precedent in creating two non-conforming subdivided lots?
So to be clear, there's no creation of lot. The land trust would be combining parcel B with their existing brown preserve property, or else they would also need a subdivision application. So in my conversations with Brian and the and the land trusts as well, everyone's in agreement that parcel B would immediately be incorporated into the brown preserve. So we're not creating a new lot. Parcel A is just going to be a non-conforming lot.
Right, we are creating parcel A.
But it already exists. Like, there's already a lot. Eleven twenty-four Valley Road already exists.
Isn't it parcel A and parcel B combined?
Correct.
Right, so it's a four acre lot.
Yes, and so we're dropping it into two. It's still a lot. There's still the same number of lots.
I understand that part, but we're creating a non-conforming lot out of a conforming lot.
Yes. So this regulation provides that the commission is permitted to make dimensional and area exceptions to lots if land is deed restricted or given to the town or the land trust or ever or other preserving bodies. So in theory, you're allowed to do this. I couldn't find any applications where it's ever been done before, but this regulation exists.
It's time for a plan.
So there's no precedent, but the regulation exists.
So it's how we get the this is Commissioner Chris again, the my my parcel B would then you would make an application to town to merge it into your other lot. So it'd be a single lot. So on the picture here, only that up, it would be essentially peninsula down here, looking to the south along Valley Road in effect, but a single lot to merge a lot and the current four acre lot becomes essentially a two acre lot. The other half is merged onto another existing lot with parcel A being a large shed for the use of the First Taxing District is the master plan on the First Taxing Taxing District. That is understood. And again, on restriction on, so the the residence stays, I assume all the stone walls on the property stay put as is the shed stays? That that's in good shape?
Yeah.
Yes, oh, so so shape? Good enough shape anyway. And nineteen fifty. You 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 some of the area around the shed and residence that is now grass and is used for storage of vehicles maybe redone so that there will be gravel there for a better foot bedding for for vehicles, but no structures. And there'll be a restriction on any additional structures on the property. So you can't build anything besides what's there. Yes.
Can you just come to a microphone?
Thank you, Chris Shipper, Chair of the Conservation Commission and Ex officio on the Land Trust Board. The 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 challenge, as as stated, of merging the land trust property with this one point acre, one point eight acre property has to do with the nature of the deed on the ten point eight acres, which doesn't include, you know, natural state. So we'd have to create a combined property, but would have a you know, the original land trust, which is ten point eight acres, would be like parcel property A. Then this property would be B and C. There would be a one acre easement or conservation easement, non-development easement. And then eight tenths having to do with the existing house structure, but also the requirement for a backup septic field, for instance, would be a requirement. You couldn't take that out. And then to our knowledge, it appears to be the former. At one point, there was a barn in the back lot along the trail. So what's left is just some of the foundation stones. So we would want to be able to say, maybe in the future, if we needed a bigger barn, we might come to you, but that would be all subject to coverage and restrictions, but we wouldn't want to rule out that possibility.
So I don't understand because
please.
You're going to merge A and B, then you're going to merge them, and then it's non-conforming. If you're not going to merge them, then then B is non-conforming.
We understand. And what we're saying is we're going to merge it, but you will have then a ten point eight acre plus one point eight. What is that? Twelve, six, twelve, twelve, six. But of that twelve, six, eight tenths, that one part which has an existing house on it will be house, then one acre will be pure preservation. You know, never to be developed, running along the roadway and then the other ten point eight acres, which exists under its own deed already. So you put it together, but you'd have to have carve-outs of what this piece of land could or couldn't do versus this piece.
And how do you, how do you do that?
I think you have to, I think you have to draw it up similar to in a way, a Waveney Park is set up as one park, but it's got A, B, C, D, E parcels. And one parcel says you can put a health facility on it. Another parcel says, you know, you can't develop it. Another one says it could be sold or what have you.
So who's going to review that?
We're going to work with Rucci, Joe Rucci's law firm to help us define that deed requirement.
So one of the conditions of the applications was that this gets provided to the commission ahead of time. They were unable to do that. So if the commission wants to view that before they make a decision, they would need to continue it, or as I think Brian had recommended, it could just be a condition of administrative approval with the okay of myself and the town attorney.
Yeah, right. So what's the benefit then of considering you're already looking to take parcel B and create a one acre parcel and a point eight acre parcel with different conditions? What's the benefit of merging the one point eight into the ten point eight?
I think we were trying to, you know, to be perfectly frank, it would be wonderful if you could say you have a one point eight acre, a two point two acre. And this, if if it could be completely separate, we're trying to accommodate or or meet with your desires personally, or the perspective is from a degree of flexibility, we agreed when the town Board of Selectmen, the Town Council and the Board of Finance approved funding to help us do this, that we would put a preservation easement on one acre of land. And that was the condition for the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. So we know we have to do that. It's a natural thing for the land trust to want to do anyway. It's not, that was no burden. But we still realize that we have a property that has a septic field that requires a backup septic field. So we have to have some degrees of freedom to to address that, particularly when you look at what's there. There are two sunken gardens. And then there's a trailway that we wanted to, you know, but it the land trust builds a lot of trails and they're generally pretty organic in their structure.
So Sarah, was was the intent of merging parcel B into the ten point eight acres purely of a a tool within the regulation to allow the formation of the non-conforming parcel A?
Yes, and because sorry, I just lost my, um, they would need a subdivision application if they didn't want to combine it with the brown preserve and I don't know if it would be possible to approve a subdivision of two non-conforming lots with the way the regulation is written.
Sarah, quick, quick question. I thought we were not requiring designation of backup septic fields anymore as as a matter of approval.
So
I know that's a wetlands.
That is a public health code item that.
I understand, but Mr. Shipper has twice referred to the need to have backup septic and my recollection was we changed that.
The planning and zoning commission.
No, but I but it's before us and and my recollection from a prior discussion in another matter was that we had removed that.
Okay. This is Commissioner Chris, my recollection is that it's it's really a backup plan in case the main septic field fails, you got some other place to put the thing on the property, and that's why they have it. So.
I bring it in, having recently purchased an antique and having the main septic field fail, you you need space to
Actually, it's actually, it's not a, it's a state of Connecticut Health Department requirement.
I I've gotten, no, I've gone through it myself. I thought that we had amended that. Apparently, I'm wrong.
So does B one hundred A, which is why it's called a B one hundred A reserve.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Chris again. So just understand legally, the the intention is that personally, we merged into the ten or so acres of preserved land and that the north two thirds ish is going to have a conservation easement on it, so you can't build on it and do other things. And that was a requirement of the funding from the from the town. And essentially, the the southern third is really, it's of a homestead carve-out is a practical matter. And with with existing structures and need for space in order to deal with septic issues and other public sanitary matters, I assume your well is still in good shape.
The well has been reported never gone dry in hundreds of years.
And that that will have a, even though it's the same legal plot of land, different pieces of it will have different limitations on what you can
That's what I was trying to, that that was the point I was trying to make. So thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you. From a question, the residence, is it structurally sound?
Residence is is structurally sound. Your your question about oil is it appears not to have ever had oil. It was electric heating in the in the property.
That's lucky.
But we are, you know, we're also working with regards to a warranty deed in terms of what we what we are receiving. We are doing some further work, but structurally it is it's a historic structure. The interior has been modified quite a bit over time and and our goal is as an organization that should operate in perpetuity and run, we run with the land, this house will run with the land. So we we think it's a a a a a a wonderful kind of adaptive reuse of an antique that was threatened with demolition.
I have a question. I have a question for Ms. Carrie. So this structure will be both a residence and a office, sort of a commercial application. Any issues regarding that?
So in the conversations I've had with the land trust, from my understanding of what they've represented to me is that it can just fall as a single family home with a minor home occupation where the person that resides there happens to be the director of the land trust. They work there full-time and their one other full-time employee, non-resident also works there, which meets the minor home occupation.
But there's a, there's a limitation to visitors.
Yes, it's five five additional visitors per week if, at which I believe I had spoken with them about. So if they determine that they can't meet that threshold, they will then need to get approval from the commission.
So does that mean a board meeting cannot be held in that structure?
If the board is more than five people and then correct, they could not.
Carpool.
Well, carpool is is interesting idea. I think our thinking was but when we approached this problem, you know, we we know that the Executive Director for the Nature Center lives on the Nature Center campus, the golf course superintendent for the country club lives on the golf course. Pastors live investries on church property. We our view is this would be similar. And I think that it would be ideal for us to be able to hold a board meeting there. And I think we would, you know, we recognize and the First Taxing District recognizes, you know, we're trying to start a new, a new path of working together. The land trust is the largest private not-for-profit landholder in New Canaan. The First Taxing District is the second largest landholder in New Canaan. It's 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 a, it's a convergence of interests in a way here, and it serves many, many, many different purposes.
Well, does it make any sense to file for a major home occupancy?
Yes, so if if they determine they can't meet those thresholds, then yes, they should.
Well, we will take guidance on that because ideally, you know, we're doing this because we studied other land trusts. When Greenwich was able to acquire a permanent residence, it was transformational for their business, their ability to meet with donors, you know, in a permanent residence as opposed to in the basement of a building or or what have you, made a made a great difference to that organization.
The purpose of my particular concern is I'm aware of another land trust that held board meetings which caused extreme neighborly discontent in an extremely similar residential situation. So and and I, again, I don't want to anticipate an issue, but we should be really clear upfront about intent so that we don't wake up with the problem later on.
Right, and I think our biggest neighbor will be the First Taxing District in in that regard. And we do see one big advantage, which is it now improves the walkability of visitation of the groups of of the brown property for people all up and down Valley Road, Colonial Benedict Hill. So you can walk down and not not have to traverse that very narrow strip of Valley Road to get to the entrance of the land trust. So that additional link, what we call a green link, is a big win for the neighborhood.
So Sarah, let me ask you this. If if I'm a pastor of a church and I have my deacons and elders meeting at my home, does that violate the the minor occupation?
So that that is federally protected by, it's called the acronym, it's RALUPA, which basically, you know, protects religious organizations from you know, being exempt from those types of requirements with a minor home occupation. So we don't really regulate that. And if, you know, a priest or someone is holding meetings at their home with their deacons or whoever, if if we're not getting complaints about it, we we're not really enforcing that. That honestly, that that's a very loaded question and it's very difficult to answer because of the federal protections around it.
I should get ordained is the answer to that, right?
I would just think, I would just think that people to have meetings of groups in their home Board of Directors of if I'm on the on the land trust and I want to have, I'm the executive, I'm not saying I'm the chairman of the land trust and I say, okay, we're going to have our 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 board meeting at my house. I I don't think that that would be seen as a zoning violation, but I guess, you know, we'll let the lawyers figure that out. But, you know, it seems to me that it'd be like a party.
I mean, it's
Pushing it. It's not really what was intended. What was intended is you have some kind of business where clients are coming and visiting you for the business. So if you're running a doctor's office, you can't have you know, more than five patients. But, you know, it just seems that like an un it doesn't seem like the regulation really contemplates should also be applied to, you know, meetings of of voluntary five oh one C three groups.
So I mean, that's something we could look into. But again, I think the whole purpose of the regulation is to protect the neighbors from traffic concerns. So if if you have one full-time employee, you're having client visits up to five times a day adding or five times a week, adding additionally a meeting where ten people are coming. I think that's that's where I think it goes over the threshold.
So how how regular are the board meetings or what? What's the regular frequency of traffic to this new headquarters?
The board meeting are monthly with the exception of August and occasionally we might not have one in December. They're held in an office building or they're also been held at the restored property up on Ponus Ridge, the, I don't know what you call the building that's been restored down by Davenport Ridge.
What's what?
Right. She's she's on the board and has generously hosted meetings there.
And and what's the headcount at these meetings typically?
Uh, well, yeah, all right, that's close enough. And as a thirty-year resident of Third and Drive, I never once had a complaint about the parking at the end of the streets. Not that we've heard about it.
This is Commissioner Chris, I'm looking at the note from Ms. Carrie. So as part of the application three things that we should consider, make sure I'm understanding this, as part of the application, submit a copy of the proposed land declaration. We have that or dedication?
We do not. And that's where I had said that the commission can either continue this until it's available or they can approve it with the condition that myself and the town attorney review the land dedicate. or they can approve it with the condition that myself and the town attorney review the land dedication and that it's two hours satisfaction.
Uh, so the copy of the deed of the lot to the north of uh, one one two four Valley Road, that's the ten acres.
Yes, we were sent a copy of that.
Has been provided. Okay, box checked and no updated deed has been provided to address the addition of a house on the lot.
So that's, that's where I'm just saying, we don't have it updated.
Okay, as proposed land dedication, um, okay.
Um, that is in process now.
Process, okay. Um, and then does dealing the developed portion of the lot of a parcel meet the spirit of section three point six point B? Which is meant for open space preservation. I mean, my own sense is that the um significant portion of it will be dedicated to open space. The more southern portion is not maybe open space in direct sense of the term, but is creating facilities to facilitate open space.
That's exactly right.
Um, be my own sense of it, I don't
transformational.
I don't
opportunity to do more of this in town.
Yeah, I'm not sure what other commissioners think, but sort of I can argue that. Um, and then there's an issue in the first taxing district. I know it's a lot owns a lot of land nearby. Um, why not merge it into the rest of it? Uh, they've made their statement on why they don't want to. So I think they probably said their piece unless they have something else. So those are, I think, the questions I think been answered or one open issue.
Yep.
Part of three point six B is um that the proposed open space dedication is referred to at least thirty days prior to the public hearing to the environmental commission, the parks and recreation and other bodies.
It was referred to them. Neither commission had any comments.
Okay. Commissioners, any other thoughts? Uh, just this Commissioner Chris again, as part of point one stated in the uh planner's memo, um, as part of this application, the applicant, uh, which would be the the, because the land with the land, is it the land trust or um uh, the first taxing district, first taxing district, okay, submit a copy of proposed land dedication that is in process, is what I understand.
Yes.
Yes. And view and responsibility, um, fair enough. Uh, you wouldn't just apply to them and then they technically would supply to us, I think. Okay, I'm getting nods, so that's right. Um, I think that's the only specific open item we would need, which in my own sense, Mr. Chairman, um, we could defer that, the judgment on that receipt and proper review to Ms. Carrie.
Mm hmm.
Um, be my own view, but um my sense is this is a rather elegant decision. We have an antique building which our plan of conservation says we should make reasonable efforts to preserve, which would certainly happen here. We have additional open space um, and additional facilities to facilitate open space by providing uh, meeting and and other um physical plant for the land trust to do do their thing. Uh, which is preservation of open space. Um, so as far as meeting the the black letter as well as the the spirit of the regulations, at least in my view, it it would uh, my opinion. Um, and this certainly would seem to be a um, a step forward for the town. And gets sort of an open, sometimes awkward issue off everyone, out of everyone's inbox and move on.
Yes.
So it's my view on the matter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any commissioners that feel they need to see the deed restriction? Or do we all feel that it's okay to defer that to planner, Carrie and the attorneys? I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Making sure that before we close it, that nobody wants to see that.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with that. There's no further comment, can open it up to the public? Is anyone in the room in the public would like to speak? Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you. I I'd like to thank you all for the um uh, discussion, but I'd also like to point out that there are additional of members of the land trust board here. President, and we thank you for your consideration in in helping what I believe Commissioner Chris says is an elegant solution uh, to preserving property and and open space and uh, helping land trust in its mission. So thank you.
Anybody?
Yes, Mike. Yes, uh, Tom Cronin, president of the of the land trust, if I can comment, also resident of six oh three Smith Ridge Road. Again, you covered uh, all the points uh, very well, so I don't want to be overly redundant. But uh, this will certainly be a a win win for uh, both parties involved in a negotiation that's been going on for for a little bit. And we are absolutely thrilled with the prospect of of being able to preserve this historic house and having a headquarters, which has been a goal of ours uh, for years. And as mentioned, we feel it's going to be absolutely transformational for our organization as far as uh, encouraging um, the future preservation of open space in our town. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Anybody else on Zoom land like to weigh in? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I do have one question for the um, first testing district, just to confirm something, sir. Um, the restrictions you mentioned on the uh, potential building that might be on the parcel you would retain, those would be papered, those would be hardcoded uh, formal restrictions on the uh, size of the building and structure and so and design and so forth as opposed to just an intention.
Um, right now they're subject to private contract. Um, we we've we've built that into into the memorandum of understanding with our neighbors, the uh, Canaan Land Trust.
Are you referring to restrictions on construction of the one point eight acres? Uh, this would be of the um Of parcel B? Yes, the the parcel B, which is you would retain, just that it would be in effect what you've declared, it will be, which is a our barn like substance or by parcel A. Parcel A, sorry, parcel A.
Sorry.
Would a a barn, uh, a structure looking like a barn with certain dimensions, which we use solely for storage vehicles. That would be um, uh, a a real restriction. It wouldn't, you can't change your mind and say, we'll put a house on it or something like that.
It's, it's a private restriction that we've entered into by contract and agreement with the New Canaan Land Trust. So I'm sure that they would have something to say about it if we did violate that.
But the restriction that you're referring to in terms of constructing something, that structure would be on parcel A or parcel B?
The rear parcel, I'm afraid I'm gonna say the wrong, it would be on the our parcel, the rear parcel. Rear part, and it would be in the corner. I don't know if you have the survey, but it would be on the south west corner.
Where there's currently a driveway going through. Where there's currently a driveway going through to the access.
Exactly. Right off that access way.
Are we allowed to restrict that or would it fall under the four acre zoning regulations in terms of coverage and setback?
It would fall under the four acre um, requirements, um, and it's a legally nonconforming lot, so you know, I I think they waive their right to a variance, um, since they have a conforming lot right now, um.
Mm hmm.
So they're they're restricting themselves already because you now have a undersized lot and you still have to meet your four acre.
Right. So and that would apply to well, it would apply to parcel A, which is the new two point one seven acre lot. But because parcel B is going to be absorbed into
They're a conforming lot, yeah.
They were a conforming lot.
Yeah.
So sir, if I understand it correctly, uh, you have a private agreement. There's a private agreement uh, regarding um, structures, limitations on parcel A, the one you intend to retain uh, between the first taxing district and the land trust of New Canaan, which the land trust in the Canaan would be legally able to enforce against you. Is that what I'm hearing, sir?
All those things are accurate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything in that agreement that prevents the taxing district to sell from selling parcel A for residential development?
Yeah, I don't would believe specifically.
What's the septic clause? You have to, sorry, you have to come up.
Well, the the the, I think Chris is referring to the the non occupiable building.
Right, that what the first taxing district had said is it it would be for maintenance purposes and there's no intention to put in or place a septic system in that property. So therefore it would not be a residential per se.
Although I suppose someone could buy a lot for a storage.
Yeah, but it's it's all good faith right now. It's
And also if he sold it, it's no longer the agreement, the contract between you and the land trust is null and void. So the new owner could attempt to do.
We have, we have no intention of, we've, we've, we've absolutely no intention of selling this lot. Um, we, we've, we acquired this for the access to the group's reservoir. Um, the the are, it's been our plan to put some sort of maintenance structure on this property. If if this were to be approved, we would retain the lot. Um, and honestly, we're not a hundred percent sure that we're gonna move ahead with the maintenance structure at all. It's, it really is the watershed land. We, the land trust purchased this so as to protect that land
Mm hmm.
from someone putting up you know, ten fifteen thousand square foot house on that and applying all sorts of lawn fertilizers and and septic systems and what have you. Um, so that that I don't think that would, that would happen.
I do want to be clear that um, I don't think with the way the regulation reads that you can put restrictions on the lot that the first taxing district is retaining because you're allowing them to have this buildable, nonconforming lot because they're giving land to the land trust. So
I'm fully aware of that. I I think what I'm trying to make clear is that the land trust is aware of the fact that it could be sold if there's nothing specifically in this agreement, that it could be sold in the future and developed as a residential nonconforming lot with a septic system.
This commissioner can I, it did, that does the restriction run with the land or not?
It's a, it's a, it's a private agreement.
It's a private agreement, does not.
You can have a private agreement that runs with the plan.
Yeah, this one does not.
This Commissioner Chris again, I mean, my understanding is that land with within a certain geographic distance of potable water supplies, which is what the reservoir is, there are restrictions on what you can do on them uh, within certain distances. Is that the case here that in effect, because you're so close to the reservoir, there are other rules that will restrict development of that property?
Well, the the land is currently in our watershed plan right now, so it's subject to restrictions right now. Um, so is all the other land around the
Right.
uh, edge of the group's reservoir.
Yeah.
Um, in order to accomplish this, we would have to release at least this portion of the watershed restrictions in order to, well, I shouldn't say that. Um, it's possible that, you know, because it's a maintenance shed, because it's exclusive for the the maintenance and operation of the dam, that it it might fall within the spirit of the watershed plan, but what's not in the spirit of the watershed plan is developing with a fifteen thousand square foot, single family residence.
I I would also mention that um, had any private individual tried to do a subdivision like this, the first group in the, you know, we would have this attorney fighting it tooth and nail, saying, we're protecting our watershed, four acre zoning. And and they do it regularly around all their reservoirs. They would fight against any kind of subdivision that would allow an additional property to be developed. So, you know, there is a good faith element here. Um, if there's a condition that the commissioners feel have to be put on there, then that's something that the first taxing district and the commission and the land trust need to sort out.
And I thi- and I think to Chris's point, that's one of the biggest leaves that have turned in the last few years, I think, is just that realization that um, why are we at odds? We're 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 both uh, conservation organizations, you know, they're really, we really should be able to work together and um um, I think that's what we're we're trying to do here.
That's what we're trying to do here. Commissioners, anything further? I think we've heard from the public and um, we'll close this application. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, um we already took care of the first item on the meeting agenda, which was the Grace Farms um, issue.
Number four.
Oh, yeah, sir. Sorry, we still have number four. Retaining walls. Um, this is an amendment to the regulations. We're looking, um well, I'll read the item. Upon discussion and consideration of the planning and zoning commission, to amend the zoning regulations dated June sixteenth, two thousand and seven, amended on July fifth, twenty twenty three. To amend section six point five point B, retaining walls, complete copy is on file and at the link. If some of you don't have it, it's it's on the webpage and you can pull up the PDF for that.
Also sharing it on
Sure.
on the screen, if you guys can read that.
Yeah, why don't you uh, why don't you explain?
Sure. So um, it was recently brought to our attention in the planning and zoning office that our retaining wall regulations are um, a bit contradictory. And so I am just bringing this forward to try to clean this up, um you know, for our own enforcement issues within the office and just, you know, going forward. So we are all in agreement of um, what needs a special permit, what needs a zoning permit and, you know, what we think of retaining walls. Um, so essentially, the first item I am trying to um, get removed is this line in um, section six point five B two C, where it says in residence zones and special zones, no retaining wall shall exceed four feet in height. Um, we've approved retaining walls over four feet in height administratively. The commission has approved retaining walls over four feet in height in residential and special zones many times. I'm happy to provide examples if desired. Um, so that's item number one. I would like to get that removed. And then um you know, the next, the next step of that is if we remove that, what is allowed in special and residential zones? So my recommendation is that there's already language in six point five four A that says retaining walls over four feet in height in a business zone needs special permit approval. I recommend that in special zones and residential smoke, residential zones that include the one half acre zone and smaller. Um, they require special permit approval if they want a retaining wall that's taller than four feet in height. Um, and then I'm recommending that in zones of the one acre residential zone and larger um, that for just a zoning permit, they can have retaining walls up to six feet in height. And then when it's six feet or higher, um, they receive special permit approval. And so that's just from, you know, what we see in the office. Um, we don't get a lot of six foot plus retaining wall applications. And I just think in a one acre lot and larger, um I don't think a six or a five foot retaining wall is going to cause that much impact to a neighbor. And so that it could just be approved administratively and when it gets above six feet in height.
So, so the intent of a four foot height was, and I know it's been it's been approved differently or installed differently even administratively, but the intent is to eliminate the sort of the the loom of a large retaining wall up against a property. And I can think of one specific um, application or house that was built about two years ago on Hillcrest here on off of Jellis Mill, where two single acre, one acre parcels, I think they're one acre, parcels right next to each other and one of the neighbors, their driveway was right up against the property line with a very steeply ascending
Mm hmm.
grade going up to the uphill lot above them. That lot was sold, redeveloped, big house put on there and they wanted a level yard. Well, the only way to get the level yard was to put in retaining walls, but they didn't th- what they did, which I think is the right way to do it, is instead of putting a six or eight foot retaining wall, single monolithic, they stepped it, they tiered it in four foot height increments, three tiers to get up to a level yard, which then pushed back the loom and made it made it less oppressive on the existing neighbor.
So two comments on that. One, it has to be ten feet from a property line. There's no provision to exempt that. So you just said that it's right.
Any retaining wall?
Any retaining wall. In residence zones and special zones, no retaining wall shall be ten feet from any property line in any other residential zone or special zone. So there's that. And then I hear you on the stepped, but you've approved six foot plus retaining walls that are not stepped. And we need to clear up the regulation one way or the other.
Yeah, and and so
Yeah, and, and Sarah, I'd comment, we, we need to keep the four foot thing and we, the fact that prior ones may have been approved is evidence of. Not good policy. I, I, I think that's, we need to keep the four foot period and we need to protect neighbors. I mean, that's a vote. But.
So, but just to be clear. Is everyone in agreeance that we need to get rid of six point, six point five point two C that just says. In residence zones and special zones, no retaining wall shall exceed four feet in height?
Six point five.
No, you can't get rid of.
Four C or two C?
Two C.
Six point five B two C. I think it's extremely contradictory that we're saying. It cannot exceed four feet in height and then we've approved. Taller than that. So, so I think we need to have a provision that says you can have higher by special permit approval.
So, so if I understand it correctly, uh, under four feet or under, you can do as a right. I would make one alteration just as a knit and two on to a uh, ten feet, I would say ten. Or fewer feet, because you could say, well, I'm nine feet away and this is only ten feet, so believe me. People will argue at ten or fewer feet away.
We have not had an issue with that.
Okay, anyway, um, yeah, I met too many lawyers who were going to argue, you know, how many angels dead and the head of a pin, but anyway, that's it. The other issue is in retaining walls, I, I'll talk about my pet peeve of these poured concrete or cement blocks, which. Okay, for example, if you go into the transfer station, there's a big retaining wall and it's cement block. It doesn't look that bad, doesn't look that good. I, it, personally, I don't like them. Uh, and so I'm wondering if there, should we say anything on this or simply make that a decision point in a special permit application?
So Kent brought up the materials he had um, provided some comments. So I, I spoke with the town attorney about this earlier today. And it is not customary in zoning regulations to specify what materials are, aren't allowed. If you even look in our um, village. Design guidelines, we don't specify specific materials. We just say that it needs to be in keeping with materials already existing. In the downtown fabric. So I don't think we should get specific about that and I, I think, you know, there's a. Special permit criteria. Um, I have it written down that talks about design and look, so I think we're covered. In that.
Yeah, that would be our only way to.
If it's not a special permit.
If it's not a special permit, we've never regulated it and I, I think it would be incredibly difficult to enforce. And it would lead to a lot of unpermitted work and a lot of variances, which is an inappropriate use of variances and.
But if, if, if we keep the four feet, anything over four feet is a special.
Yes, so then it's getting reviewed.
So, so our risk here is that somebody puts ugly three foot, nine inch. Uh, no, I'm, I'm just clarifying, right? Because we could keep the four feet, right? Anything above that's going to get a special permit application moving forward and we're not going to specify materials because we, you think. That if we do that, it makes it more likely that people will violate the rules.
Yes, and because in speaking with the town attorney, it's not customary to specify materials in zoning regulations.
Fair enough. Okay, so I can remember, there's. There are a couple of projects that have established this really bad benchmark for us, right? The view is one of them. It just broke a whole lot of rules that unfortunately it did. And then there was a, a project up on. Uh, it was in the northeast part of town, may have been off a valley, maybe. It was, uh, if you guys remember, it was a, an accessory structure. It was a large garage. Um, and it was up on the hill drop in the back of the property drop down and they were going to do those.
Interlocking.
Interlocking blocks and we did end up approving that one. I don't know if it ever got built or not.
I think you're talking about sixty two Lone Tree Farm.
Maybe, yeah.
It never got built. They totally scrapped it.
Totally scrapped it. So that's, that's, that's an, two perfect examples where we've gone over the four foot limit. Um, I don't know how many more there were than that. I don't remember.
Um, one ninety brushy ridge was another recent example where.
But that was an existing one.
Well, it was built without a permit.
Right, so.
Existing and it was six months old, you know.
That was one that was above Garibaldi, that was.
But that was an awkward situation. Yeah.
So, so it sounds like.
I think we're in agreement that we want to leave.
The four feet.
Leave the four foot. But you, but provide the opportunity to go higher with special permit.
Okay. So, and just, I, I did the numbers, so if, if we go that route. Um, in twenty twenty three, we would have had seven more special permit applications for retaining walls. In twenty twenty two, you would have had nine more special permit applications and same with twenty twenty one, you would have had nine more.
But uh, they're short sessions.
Hopefully.
Uh, no, I think that's fine.
We've got to fill our time somehow.
Who wants to be home before nine?
Look, we're almost done.
I have, um, can I make a couple of points? So I think, Sarah, I sent a email because I didn't honestly see Ken. I didn't see the call for comments on this, so I apologize for not getting them in earlier. But I, I align with, I think what most people are saying here, but like, one of the things I did in cursory research was they said that. At the state level. You know, see Connecticut State Code requires retaining walls that are over three feet. Um, from finished grade bottom to finished grade top. Um, require a building permit. So are we saying? That we respect this, so.
Oh, yes. Yep.
Okay, I just want to put, because when we said you can build anything up to four feet as a right, I just want to make sure that people still have to get a permit.
We, we haven't run into any issues with that.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify, thanks, when you said that. And then the other thing, um, I wanted to understand like. From like definition of a retaining wall, I hate to ask a stupid question, but like, if the retaining wall is here and it's a, you know, a six foot. You know, stone wall at the front of your property, but the, the change in grade is three feet. Is that a three foot retaining wall or is that a six foot retaining wall with only like three foot of it?
So it's always just, it's just measured from um, top of wall to bottom of wall, yeah, top. I'm saying it wrong. Bottom of all, the top of all, and it's just what the grade is at the bottom of the wall and what the grade is at the top of the wall.
But on the outside of the property, right?
Yes.
So you could have the three feet in, in the interior of the retain wall, but on the outside of it, it could be six feet.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So you could like, uh, I don't know, a good example, like the wave any terrace, right? Like when you're looking out there. In theory, that's like probably what, like a three foot retaining wall plus like a three foot. Um, ballast straight, let's call it. So, um, so is that a three foot retaining wall or is that a six foot retaining wall?
I honestly have never been on the wave any terrace, so that's not a great example.
Sorry, I'm just trying to. Maybe it's, it's academic. Sorry, we'll skip over that one, sorry. Um, and then the last one, I just had a comment, I think just reinforcing it, if the walls get really big. My fear is that it's going to take a lot of inspection, like honestly, the Garibaldi one, I think came to mind because. We didn't inspect it and we didn't know what was behind it. We didn't know how well it was constructed. And I feel like if a four foot or five foot wall falls over. No big deal, but if, if like an eighteen foot wall falls over, it's, it's much more consequential. So I, I just like the idea of them keeping them small and kind of middling and, and honestly, from a development perspective, I think we're going to see people push for flat lots. And I mean, sure, the flatter the lot, the more value potentially, but. You know, it's kind of like the setback rules for looming. I, I feel like it's a, it's a condition of the lot they're dealing with, so we shouldn't make it too easy for them to.
So I think especially if we're requiring every single, um, you know, zone in town has to go for a special permit if it's over four feet in height. I think we're actually really limiting it and incentivizing that because people don't like coming to the commission for a special permit.
They'll, they'll talk to their landscape architect.
Yeah.
Figure out a way to do this without going for special permit.
Right, and, and at the end of the day, it's a building permit issue. It's engineering. And uh, we could always have a condition that engineering has to approve it.
Okay, so I said my piece next.
So it sounds like we just need to change number four. In that, where did my pen go? Um, to just unless modified by the commission through granting of a special permit, no proposed retaining wall. Shall exceed four feet in height in any zone. And that's. We have to change to and we'll get rid of two C.
And we could have the rocket docket for any approvals required.
Combine section two and four.
Um, I mean, it only, it talks about residential zones and special zones and does not talk about business zones, so.
Or modify.
Okay.
Okay.
We're clear? We need to vote on it?
Um, you need to make sure there's none from the public who wants to speak on it and then you have to close it and we'll vote on it.
Anybody in the room like to speak to this? Anybody in Zoom land like to speak to this issue? Nope, I think we're closed. Thank you. All right, so we've closed all of our regular items here. Uh, why don't we go back and vote on a few things? So we've already voted on number one, uh, while Mr. uh, Gildermin was here. Um, for the Greens Farms issue, we're done with that one. Six thirty seven Valley Road. This is the subdivision of the Segway net, seven acre lot into the two and change and four and change. Do we have any deliberation, comments, questions, observations?
I thought we left. That one open?
Yeah. Forgot to mark that. Next, that one's open. Then we get to eleven twenty four Valley Road, the first taxing district and the subdivision here. So I do have to, um, I guess. Uh, applaud you on the creative use of the regulation in terms of avoiding the subdivision. Regulation and subdivision requirement.
This was like eight months of, you know.
Was it?
Thinking.
We squared the circle. Square the circle, but um. I, I, I'll just chime in to start. I think it's a, a good use of the property in terms of tying it back into the. Um, in, into the uh, land trust property. Um, a great solution for preservation of the historic structure on the, on the site. Um, I'm all in favor of that and you really couldn't have much lesser of an impact of use on that site and on that property. You know, if they're going to have a meeting once a month and someone's living there, I mean, it's, it's negligible effectively. You know, I just, um, I would encourage them to, when they do finalize all of this, to at least provide a site plan. Um, showing what their proposed parking area is going to be off of the curb cut on Valley Road. So we have something defined as to what they would like to use it for, so. If it becomes overused in the future, we can at least point to something and say, well, this is what you told us it's going to be.
You may want to add that as a condition.
We can.
Provide a site plan.
Does anyone else have any?
Yeah, I would say another condition might be the lighting of the parking. Uh, that it would have to conform with our uh, regulations.
Yep. Parking, um, do we need to, I don't think, bless you, I don't think we do, but we don't need to stipulate anything about. Further future development on either parcel A or parcel B will be in conformance with the four acre. Zoning laws and restrictions.
No.
That's kind of assumed.
I think it's abundantly clear.
Okay. Anybody else have any issues? Okay, um, I call for a motion.
You may just want to clarify who's seated because I know John hopped on Zoom.
Oh, yeah.
Chris, I think showed up a little.
Chris is not. John, were you on for the whole thing for the Valley Road application? He's, he's unmuting.
Uh, yes, but I'm going to recuse myself on this one.
Uh, that's right, you are part of the land trust.
I, I have been, I'm not, I haven't been in years, but I, I'm sympathetic with them, so I'm going to recuse myself.
No, that's fine. So seated for this, we have myself, Ms. Nielsen, Kent Turner, John, Chris, Art Casavant. Uh, and Mr. Knack. So we have a quorum for that. Okay, uh, do I hear a motion on this one?
As Commissioner Chris, I move, we approve the application with the uh, conditions that have just been stated.
Okay, so to reiterate, the conditions are that the applicant shall submit a site plan. Identifying uh, and dimensioning a parking area on the site plan. For the proposed parking area. And also a stipulation on uh. Lighting illumination of the parking area.
Plus one other, I'm if I may, that um, the applicant submit a copy of proposed land dedication. Uh, which we discussed during the hearing and that be submitted to the zoning office for approval from the zoning officer.
Correct.
There would be a condition precedent to the. Effective approval.
Z E U, Z E O to have final review and approval.
Yes. Those three conditions are what I propose.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Knack. Okay, let's call to a vote. Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Uh, Kent Turner?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
And Mr. Knack?
Yes.
This application is approved. Uh, and last but not least, approval of the. Um, retaining wall regulations and the zoning code as we just discussed. Uh, leaving the four foot stipulation in there. Uh, do I have a motion of approval on this one?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Nielsen. Second, anyone?
Second.
Mr. Turner, thank you. Any deliberation or additions on this regulation? I think we're clear on it. All right, call to vote, myself, Dan Radman, yes, Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
And to be clear for this one, Mr. Herring and Mr. Engel were both seated since they were part of it.
Yep.
So uh, continuing the vote, Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
And Paul Knack?
Yes.
Unanimous approval there. Great. All right, we're cruising.
With the administrative actions, could we just um, talk about the why first, since I know there's a representative here and we can move the meeting along?
Ju- just before we go there, I care, I'm sorry, I just want to comment, I think your. Um, decision to bring that clarification point forward to us is an excellent idea and I thank you for doing that. Because I think anytime we have these, it really does.
Oh, there are more coming, don't worry.
Thank you.
All right, um, administrative action items here. First one, approval of a revised calendar for commission meetings.
Could we just do the why first, since I know there's.
Someone, why?
Yeah.
YMCA.
The YMCA, the landscaping.
Third, I'm got it.
Could we just do that first?
Sure. So that's the five sixty four South Avenue YMCA landscape determination.
Yes, so um, at the request of the commission, I went back to the why and compared the. Two thousand six plan to what is um, present at the site, I um. Posted a memo online with my recommendations. I'm pulling that up now, um, essentially. In the memo, I identified areas in the two thousand six and the twenty fourteen plan where um, we could not field locate. Um, items that were proposed in two thousand six or supposed to already be existing in two thousand six. Um, and we kind of used that plan as the benchmark of what should still be existing today, excepting that. There have been many landscaping plans through the decades on this property and we kind of have to stick a pin in it somewhere. Um, so essentially, um. Eight evergreen trees I noted were missing, three deciduous trees were missing and um, there were four planting areas that needed supplemental shrubs. Trying to think, what else? So I don't know if there are any questions, um, if you want me to go item by item through. The recommendation.
So, so a summary question, Sarah, for you is, should these, how, will these items be addressed or fixed by the why?
I believe they will. Yeah, sure.
Just come up to the podium and state your name. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Margaret Riley, the executive director of the Y. Um, yes, I expressed to Sarah by email today that the Y is dedicated to being a good neighbor. And dedicated to being in full compliance with the zoning uh, plans that we have been required to. uh, plans that we have been required to fulfill. Um, just by way of background, we have replaced plants over the years, we have hundreds of plantings on this property and it does become a bit challenging to keep track of whether three or four, and we did take out ones as they died and did our best to replace them. I think the primary complaint that, um, has come to light by the neighbors is the fact that our pine trees have just grown so tall that they no longer provide the screening that they used to, so we're happy to supplement that. Um, I would only ask that we be, um, given as specific direction as possible so that we know that we're putting the right plants in the right places, um, to satisfy this commission and our neighbors' issues.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So.
My one other recommendation, um, because I did as a courtesy send this to the neighbor who, you know, initially complained, um, and brought this to our attention, and so he, um, read through my suggestion, um, because this is, his property line is involved with the first issue and, um, he still feels that, um, there aren't enough trees and are not, um, compliant with what was initially promised of the Y, um, way back when, when it was first proposed, so again, I think, I think we agree that two thousand six is where we're kind of sticking a pin in this, and it said that there were thirty-two trees in two thousand six and I counted twenty-nine today, so, um, while I understand that that neighbor is still not satisfied, I, I would recommend that maybe the Y and him can come up with some other agreement of maybe getting more trees, but I, I just don't know how much further the commission can require.
We can't. We can't, we, it was, you know, ninety-seven was the first one, then there was a revision in two thousand three, then there was two thousand six, then there was two thousand fourteen, fifteen. You, you can't keep going back in history that far. Things grow when things die, right? So, I think your, your approach to this is, is the correct one in that let's, let's take a look at what's currently deficient in terms of the plantings of things that have died off that are evident since that two thousand six application. We just heard that the Y is more than agreeable to replace those, and if there's anything that the neighbor requires above and beyond that, that's not our enforcement, we're not the enforcement agency for that, that's, that's a well, I'll call it a civil matter, it's a civil matter between two neighbors to agree on what else might be required to satisfy his desires.
I, I have a question regarding what's required, Commissioner Chris, what's required, so to what extent is it already decided how many of what type to plant and specifically what type of tree or bush to plant, or is it just say a bush or a tree or something?
It is incredibly specific along Putnam Road, which is where I kind of identified and the um, conditions of approval from two thousand six are clear that whatever dies need to be replaced to the satisfaction of the commission. The issue with his property line is that those trees, my understanding is were part of like a nineteen sixty-something approval, and because it's always been existing, it's kind of just gotten glossed over after every expansion.
But, uh, you correct me if I'm wrong, but those trees that were part of the nineteen sixty, those are the large white pines that have now grown to be eighty feet tall, then there's no no evergreen from forty feet down.
Correct.
Yeah. There's nothing we can do about it.
Can't do anything.
They're telephone poles. But they are the trees that were
Yeah.
promised and planted.
Yes, I, I think his, his concern is that there were more that were supposed to be planted than what are there today, but I, I don't know what.
That was fifty years ago.
Yeah, but dating back.
Dating back very far, yeah.
We can't do that.
And also, we wouldn't want to, I mean, effectively, I'm looking at his note here, like, you know, these trees have, have grown sparse, I mean, in certain interpretation, that would mean the Y should cut these large trees down and plant trees that are approximately, you know, two feet to twelve feet high in the perfect, you know, green arborvitae hedge that would, would prevent me from seeing headlights, which, I mean, I, I can't necessarily think that we'd want to have people cut down trees to provide the right.
No, 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 no.
No.
The, the one item that was brought up that, um, I, I don't have the answer to is, um, in his most recent comment is that, you know, the spread of, let's say we want arborvitae's going forward because they don't grow sparse, um, the taller they get is I don't know if at full growth they are as wide as, you know, a, a white pine or a spruce, so do we just replace it one for one and we say good enough, or do we do two for one because the width is different, I, I don't know how specific we're supposed to get, and I also, I'm not a landscape architect, I'm kind of at my limit for landscape knowledge.
One, one for one.
Yeah. I think that's easy.
I mean, I mean, we can't predict how fast they're gonna grow and will they ever be equal to two or, you know?
Yep.
I, I will tell you that other zoning entities do in fact enter into that discussion. I don't think we should.
Wow.
I, I would go step out in the ledge and say that they should plant a variety of plants that are, like, because I was thinking about what we did at, at the field club. And they came to us with a plan that effectively had, um, a mix of hemlock spruces, um, and other, you know, conifers that I mean, honestly, I'm dealing with this on my property, like, there's a hornbeam blight and like, my whole row of twelve hornbeams could be screwed. And, or there's a, a beech tree leaf, so I'm having, like, so.
They're going to.
Um, so I guess my thought would be, you know, a mixture of conifers that are probably grow at different rates, um, that may be resilient to one particular blight.
So I, I suggested arborvitae specifically because they already have hemlocks and spruces on the property and it seems like the spruces aren't doing well and hemlocks, there's, um, a bug that's been attacking. That, that's why I suggested arborvitae's.
Quick question regarding arborvitae, um, they tend to be deer food. I'm not sure there's a deer issue there.
Alternative.
There is.
Oh. Someone is shaking their head in the audience, but.
No, I haven't seen that problem here.
You will.
I'm saying, I, as Commissioner Chris, I've seen everybody's planted to become the popsicle trees where everything below six feet is eaten off, and you have just a little bit at the top, um.
I've seen the same thing at my neighborhood.
He's got a six-foot fence. But not a four-foot wall. Yeah, no four-foot wall that the deer can get up on. Build a wall.
Right.
No, I haven't seen any deer on the Y property. So, yeah.
I, probably not, I don't think so in that part of town, but.
Well, landscapes.
Um, some things you plant and it's just deer food, then I'm gonna go immediately.
I, I think there is a, a deer resistant arborvitae that you can try.
But you've got, you've got a berm that goes up four feet, and then you've got like a, a string of, I'd call them pin oaks probably, or oaks that
Mm-hmm.
Go up, and then you've got a six-foot wall or a six-foot fence, so you basically have this spot.
Mm-hmm.
That the arborvitae's in three to five years will fill nicely.
Sure.
Yeah, so one to, one to one, is that what we're saying?
I, I think it's one to one, and I think if the neighbor wants it denser than that, like, which is his little diagram, too. I think, again, that's an agreement between the Y and the neighbor.
Okay.
Pretty creepy.
So then it, it sounds like we'll just go forward with what my memo suggests, and I'll answer questions of the Y as needed and if anything else comes up, I'll refer back to you all.
Agreed.
John Cruz, it came up, but the American hollies are good ones, too.
Do they grow tall enough?
They do, I have.
Fifteen feet, twenty feet.
Twelve footers.
Point Nuke in, uh, Greenwich, they have a large, essentially stand-up hollies, and they're, they're pretty big and they're, they're lovely trees, and they're thick.
But they're vulnerable to, uh, sap suckers.
Yep, I think everything's becoming vulnerable to something at this point.
Mine, mine is dying.
It's, I have a couple hollies that are doing real well, but that's me, but, um, I take your point, but.
Oh, you should see the bark.
The nice thing about that, I'll just say this, is that they're green, they're pretty, they're friendly to wildlife, and they're thick, and they grow lower to the ground, so they provide screening from about one foot up.
They're beautiful.
Yeah, so we can, we can leave it to the dis- the discretion of the Y and the neighbor. Holly versus arborvitae, but it's a one-for-one replacement at this point, based on.
Put a hedge in front of his property.
Yep.
True.
Yep. Build a wall.
Because right now, he's, he has zero hedge.
Mm-hmm.
The Y has a pretty large hedge.
Okay.
Do, we don't need a vote or anything on this, right?
No, it's not an official decision, okay.
Okay.
Uh, Saint Luke's twenty twenty-three enrollment report, oh, sorry, going back to the revised calendar issues. Um, so revised calendar meetings, we've been doing pretty well with our meetings in the last couple months. Uh, we originally changed it to, um, six o'clock start times to accommodate all the beginning of the year, eight thirty G applications and the multiple meetings to try and get in front of all those, but I, right now, we're in good shape with all of that. Uh, my recommendation is for the balance of the year to go, and moving forward into twenty twenty-three, at least for the foreseeable future, go back to a seven P M. meeting start. Um, still same rules would apply, you know, we, we, ten thirty, whatever application we're hearing at ten thirty, that's the last application, and we push it to the next meeting, so as to not burden ourselves with one A M., you know, uh, deliberations. Um, that would still apply, but for, for the rest of the, uh, October, November and December meetings, and then moving forward into twenty twenty-four, we'll go to a seven P M. start. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest that if we do have an, a docket which is quite full on a specific meeting, we may want to move to six o'clock.
We have to do.
Judgment call.
We have to do that ahead of time by how long?
We need twenty-four hours notice for a special meeting, that's it, so.
Would we have to then?
We have to notice it as a special meeting with the
But it, it could be held on the same day, earlier time, if it's noticed as a special meeting?
Yeah, so that was on, um, previously, but I, I just realized if, um, if you plan to talk about a new application that requires a public hearing, we still have to notice it, and I believe we have to provide technically fifteen days.
Fifteen days.
Um, but so if it's, if it's a continued item, we just need twenty-four hours notice.
Yeah, but we can't assume that all the items on that docket are gonna be continued, right?
Well, so I mean, it's, so, let's use the, you know, eight thirty G situation we had before. Let's say we needed in our March meeting to discuss Hill Street, and it was already, we, we knew we were talking about it in February, it was already open. If we're continuing it to the March meeting, and you want it to start at six P M. versus seven, we really just need twenty-four hours notice, because it's already continued.
Yep.
We already talked about it, um.
Is this room available? At six?
Yeah, so th- this is always our, yeah, this is always our room, they, they didn't really do anything before.
I mean, I think we comfortably, you comfortably at this point have visibility into the next one to two months ahead of us as to the application.
Theory, yes.
In theory.
In theory.
So if necessary for, even though we're, I think we're going to agree to go to seven o'clock in the future, if we wanted to say for the October meeting, we knew that we were gonna have an excess number of applications, we could make that audible at the September meeting and change that meeting alone.
Yes.
Okay. So that's our backstop. So, um, Commissioners, are we okay to go into seven o'clock?
Absolutely.
I think.
You should have an official, though.
We need a vote?
Yeah.
Okay. So, do we need a motion?
No.
Okay. Call to vote, Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Knog?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Saint Luke's twenty-three enrollment report.
So, um, annually, Saint Luke's is required to report their enrollment numbers, um, to staff and in their twenty thirteen or twenty twelve approval, there was a condition that stated every time they added fifty-three students, a traffic study would be required. And so, um, the threshold for fifty-three students started at whatever their enrollment was at the time of the approval. Um, when they hit fifty-three students being added, they were required to submit a traffic study to the Planning and Zoning Commission to confirm that um, parking, traffic counts, level of service, um, were not negatively impacting the neighborhood, and they hit that threshold for the first time in twenty twenty. And so you all administratively agreed to waive that traffic during COVID nineteen because a traffic study in twenty twenty is kind of useless. So, we're, we're more than a full year out of COVID at this point, um, they're up to six hundred and three students um, at this point, and it was at five eighty-four students when they were supposed to be required to have that traffic study, so I just wanted to take the temperature of the commission as to whether they feel that they want to continue to waive that traffic study, or if they want to see a traffic study from Saint Luke's.
Traffic study.
Yeah. Commissioners? I, I think a traffic study is warranted.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. So the special permit, um, states that it's required by November fifteenth of the year, um, are we okay with that? Do we think that gives them enough time?
I don't think that gives them enough time.
We should give them an extension.
Give them, uh, typically, a traffic study with the consultants out there, they're gonna wanna by the time you get the consultant on board, we're gonna have to notify them, they get their stuff together, I think ninety days from today is, is probably inadequate in time. Um, which would be January fifteenth, January. January first, right?
Well, Christmas, yeah.
Yeah. They could probably.
Say for the January meeting?
Yeah, by January, the meeting is probably more than adequate.
Four months.
Yep, four months.
Okay.
But they, but the, the time that they're actually gonna take the counts is critical, and if it's a Christmas time or, you know, holidays.
Well.
How about I reach out to Saint Luke's? See what they say and then report back to the commission in October, and we can see if the time they gave us is reasonable, or if we.
I assume we're gonna vote on this, right?
Yes.
So I would suggest that however we do this, we authorize you to do that as part of our vote, and you, uh, therefore can move forward, you know, with a reasonable requirement that, that they deliver a, that fulsome study at a reasonable pace.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move that we ask Saint Luke's to do a traffic study at a reasonable pace and that the uh, town planner be responsible for reviewing and implementing that action.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Krag. Call to vote, Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
John, Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
And Paul Knack?
Yes.
Great. Done with that one. Outdoor dining.
I think, um, we decided that we're just gonna move that to next month.
Um, with regard to outdoor dining, we heard from uh, Chef Louis and White Buffalo back in, uh, that was a July meeting, I think?
Yes, so they'll be coming to the October meeting, um.
With the outcome?
Yes, which I've, I've been a party to.
Can you fill us in on what's been going on?
Sure, um, we've received continued complaints from Chef Louis landlord, um, about the noise and I'm feeling that the barrier that the commission required be provided is not adequate or was not adequate. Um, White Buffalo felt that they were bending over backwards complying and it sounds like the noise is still an issue. I spoke with a hostess at Chef Louis just on a random encounter, um, and asked her how she, how she felt about the music, and she said it's, it's very difficult to take orders. So.
What, what are the neighbors, what are the neighbors saying?
There is, um, one resident who lives in the condos, um, next to fifty-one Main Street. Um, because basically it's just the parking lot that the town owns is the only thing between him and the alleyway, and, um, he travels a bit, but he's supposed to send me, he, he kept a log of what nights he could hear it when he was home, I'm still waiting to receive that from him, but I haven't, those are the only two people I've heard from.
I could hear it from my house one night.
Where do you live?
I live south of Bristol.
Yeah, far away.
It was, it was loud one night.
It is, it is difficult to enforce, and it, it has been a lot of, you know, he said, she said. So.
Amazon decibel meter on the wall. Joking, I said that, but John Engel, John Engel had found one.
Mm-hmm, yes.
My understanding is the White Buffalo, they, they said they purchased one, but again, it's of no use if we don't have a decibel. We are conditioning them to have.
The decibel police.
Yeah.
John Engel, we're gonna nominate you for a position.
Your sound enforcer.
Use the decibel police. Um, yeah, that's unfortunate. Um.
Well, I think you've gotta try to uh, you know, encourage and continue to encourage them to uh come up with a mutually acceptable sol- solution.
Yes, they, um, the, the landlord of Chef Louis and the White Buffalo had a conversation, I think, two weeks ago and they did not come to any sort of resolution. Um. Yeah.
So, you know, it'd be much easier for us if we don't have them at loggerheads next month when they show up.
I agree. We've, we've tried, they've, they've tried, they, they did have a meeting, so.
When is um, I, if I remember the conversation correctly, back in July, White Buffalo was expecting to end their music nights in the middle of October.
October one is what the approval was until.
So this weekend is it?
Is the last weekend. So if anyone wants to go there Friday or Saturday night to get their take on it, now's your last chance.
So we, our, our noise reg.
Starts at ten P.
M P M.
But it says uh forty-five decibels at the receptors property line.
Property line, correct.
Which a car tends to driving by go higher than.
Okay, so that's not useful.
No.
I think it's just, it's unfortunately um, for the White Buffalo and for Chef Louis, but they're basically in a, in an echo chamber back in that alley.
Yep.
Right? They've got the alley walls that are just radiating forward. They've got that covered parking area in the back that acts as a speaker box and Chef Louis. Because I was there when it was happening, they leave their kitchen door open because they want extra air ventilating in and out of the kitchen, which then opens it up to all that noise and the guys in the kitchen can't even hear themselves think. So it's um, it's just, yeah, close proximity of the two, unfortunately. And I don't know if repositioning their band would do it or help it and, or make it worse in a different way. I don't know. Um, what, what um what does, what permission does White Buffalo currently have from us for outdoor music or outdoor dining?
Um, they have special permit approval for outdoor dining on the patio. They received special permit approval through October one of this year for outdoor entertainment to then be reviewed and modified, continued or revoked.
But prior to that, there was no.
It was outdoor dining.
It was only outdoor.
And then there were two events per year, which during COVID and post-COVID was not followed.
Right.
So in other words, um, their, let's call it temporary allowance is about to expire and we can simply choose not to renew it.
Correct.
Got it. That would seem to provide, uh, what's the term motivation?
Yeah.
Media, meeting of minds, I would think.
Yep.
You may want to communicate to them.
Well, it expires this weekend, so they're not gonna be doing outdoor music until next year and when it was with, they'll come up with in, in May of next year.
True.
Yeah, but it'll give them seven months to think about it.
Yeah. Maybe people will reach a meeting of minds in that, during this interregnum.
Yep. Um, last item, or second to last item, the P O C D. Um, survey's out. John, do you wanna?
Yeah. The um survey is out. It, it, last day is Saturday to fill it out. Uh, my understanding is we are very close to two thousand responses.
Yep.
Uh, which is about ten percent of the town, which is very good. Um, the uh, our consultants have said that a four percent response rate is seen as a good response rate. So we've more than doubled that, so good. Um, I know some of the uh people, uh the entities we have sent um notices of this too, such as various charities and other civic groups have very, been very assertive in passing it on to their members, which is exactly what we were hoping they were gonna do. So I'm very pleased with that and I think that's part of the reason, because of the um assertive um communication plan we had that we're getting very good response rates. That's helped the matter. So um it's soon gonna be, the ball is soon gonna be in the court of S L R to um digest the survey information and prepare a presentation. There will be a meeting of the P O C D subcommittee in the third week of October where we are going to be sitting down with the uh with the consultant to um hear them present the details of the plan, or excuse me, of the uh survey results and some of their thoughts on that. And the following, the following week will be the uh, I'm calling it community kickoff meeting where it will be presented to the uh, public in a more interactive fashion where um during which I would anticipate S L R will be presenting it to the general public. There will be various, I'm calling it booths or tables on some of the or stations where uh some of the major topic areas will be discussed in more detail.
Yes.
Uh, and then subsequent to that, uh later in the evening, more interactive conversation with residents on, okay, what have we learned and let's talk about it. Um, that will probably be followed up in due course by some more targeted meetings on specific topics. Uh, those specific topics will be uh reviewed and discussed in more detail at the meeting in the third week of October. Uh, and again, want to hold those decisions in advance until we have the survey and have the data and have the commentary from the consultants. So that's the, uh, that's the current plan.
Is the, um, is the review meeting still the eighteenth?
Yes, it's the eighteen. I've told some people the thirteenth for some reason, but it is the eighteen. I, I don't know where I got that date.
And originally, we, there was a, actually, it's understandable because originally there was an eleventh meeting date, so I was.
That is not happening. It's the.
It's the eighteenth.
Uh, eighteenth, that is be the presentation of findings. That's gonna be in the boardroom, I think.
Correct.
Um, and that's gonna be the subcommittee and S L R reviewing it against a public meeting, so we'll encourage everyone to attend. And then the meeting, uh, the big meeting is going to be on the twenty-sixth. Uh, start time is not determined yet. But that is going to be at Laton Community Center because um I'm told that just the physical facility is easier to deal with the various stations and other, the other means that the um consultant wants to use to uh present. And um that's the kickoff meeting that I, or essentially public kickoff meeting.
Meeting on the eighteenth, is that gonna be six or seven?
Um, I think six.
Thank you. And Sarah, our regular meeting, is that gonna be on the twenty-fourth or thirty-first?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
The thirty-first is a toughie.
Mm-hmm.
I'm busy.
Our meetings are technically the fourth Tuesday. Our meetings are technically the fourth Tuesday of the month, not the last Tuesday, so.
Fifth Tuesday. The fifth then, fifth Tuesday, yes.
No, because it's on the twenty-fourth.
Yes, but the thirty-first is the fifth.
Yeah, yeah, which, yeah.
I will not be able to attend on the twenty-fourth or the twenty-sixth, unfortunately, so. I'll be sitting on a barge in Louisiana somewhere.
Okay.
You're drinking water, right?
Yeah.
Don't have to gators or uh.
Bring your bottle of water.
Red fish.
I, I was in Houston over the weekend and it was incredible to see how dry they are getting. Oh yeah, really terrible.
They're not dry here. Not dry. No, no.
Okay, uh, approval of minutes. Uh, has anyone taken a look and does anyone have any comments or changes to last month's meeting minutes?
This commissioner Chris, I have one typo. It's a number two under Brookwood. You have two A's in David. That's it. That's all I got.
Okay, um. Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Seconds, anybody?
Second.
We have a second. Call to vote, Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen.
Yeah.
Kent Turner.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Art Casavant.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
And Paul Knog.
Yes.
We are done. Meetings adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. We've never seen.
Oh, my God.
Nine o'clock.
Right at nine.
I'm gonna do it myself.
It's impressive.
Hold, hold on.
Start our celebration.
Stop the recording. Before someone says something on.